The February 1st, 2012 meeting of the City Council is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may be able to view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m. and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the city clerk's office or at the front desk of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizens' participation, or specified public hearing items. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Bonnie Polly, Christ Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, who has filled this world with beauty, we thank you for your presence among us this morning. Open our eyes to behold your gracious hand in all your works. Be present with each of these council members seated here today. Guide their minds and hearts as they seek your will. Fill them with the love of truth and righteousness. Make them ever mindful of their calling to serve in their offices, to promote the well-being of all people as they address the needs and wants of our community. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. This is the ceremonial portion of the agenda. There are plenty of seats down here if you'd like to come, or are you just going to be coming forward shortly? Okay. The ceremonial portion of the agenda, our first item, Councilman Coffin is going to recognize the February Citizen of the Month. You lucky man!
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you. I think we should be reserving the applause for Councilman Wolfson, who's leaving us, but more importantly for our good Councilman Ross, who held up the good name of the council by defeating a challenger more than two to one yesterday. But there'll be more on that, I'm sure, at the time. Thank you very much, Your Honor, for letting me have the microphone for a minute for a very special honor for a very special resident of Ward 3. Frequently, we have for presentations to Citizen of the Month people who maybe are making a big name for themselves in the community, maybe they have done something that got themselves into the press, or they had done something, maybe they were people of wealth or perhaps people of significance in a large group. But I think today, to just change the tone just a little bit, I'm going to introduce somebody to us who I believe will be a wonderful representative of the Citizens of the Month. I'd like to welcome and recognize our February 12th Citizen of the Month, Mr. Isaias Miramontes. Miramontes, please join us at the podium. Come on up. And bring the family. Come on, kids. Everybody come up. Sylvia. Uh-huh. Uh-huh. It's a little different today. Come on up here with all of us. Mr. Miramontes has been a resident of our city for 19 years, and he's resided on East Sunrise all that time. East Sunrise, near Eastern, is not an easy neighborhood to live in. It's one of the toughest ones we have. We are down there a lot, trying to help the citizens, overcome some of the gang activity and other things. So, a lot of people move out, but there are some people that stay and fight the good fight. You see, Isaias has been married to Sylvia for 17 years, and they have two boys, Eric, 17, I think you can tell the difference here, a sophomore who lives at Valley, works at Valley, goes to school at Valley-I, and Eddie, age 5, the guy over here who's in kindergarten at Sunrise Acres. So, welcome, boys, to this meeting. I'd also like to welcome Las Vegas Metro Police Officer David Cienega. Is David here? Thank you. Come on up, David. David, who's everywhere at once, even took a police report on a break-in in my car last week. He's the officer who nominated Mr. Miramontes and the Hispanic-American Resource Team members who join us today, Hart. Mr. Miramontes has been instrumental in helping the Las Vegas Metro Police Department Downtown Area Command's community-oriented policing detail. They make friends with people. They try to help. Mr. Miramontes has also assisted the Hispanic-American Resource Team conduct a crime-free corridor community outreach, as well as organizing a neighborhood cleanup, which we had just a couple of months ago with his neighbors and the police department. Isaias is a graduate of the Las Vegas Metro Police Department Hispanic Citizens Police Academy team. Isaias is an individual who takes pride in being a resident of our ward, the city of Las Vegas, and was selected for his community service in the neighborhood. So, I think we should all keep in mind, that's a category that we can readily find heroes. Isaias previously worked as a delivery driver and as a construction worker. And I have to tell you that currently, he's unemployed. And those of you who are employers, those of you watching on television maybe, want somebody who knows how to do things and get them done, and is not afraid to be able to conquer adversity. He's your man. He takes pride in this, and he wants to continue to participate. So, he's what we want. Behind us here, Isaias, we have a beautiful plaque to present to you in the hands of Jace here, who is going to unveil this. Well, here we have, first, the plaque from Councilman Ross. It's "From Us to You, to Honor You for Your Service to Our Community," Isaias. Truly, you are a wonderful man. In addition, and I don't think he knew about this, we're going to be posting your name outside City Hall, right here, as Citizen of the Month for the next month. And you will be the last person designated as the Citizen of the Month at this City Hall, because we are moving in one month. You get to keep the name tag. Officer Cienega, I know you'd like to say a couple of words about Isaias, and tell us a little bit about what he's done and the things he's had, even though he's had personal difficulties and worries, like every person in this town, of the 20%, 25% of the people in town who are unemployed. Tell us a little bit about what he's still volunteering for.
Mayor Goodman, thank you. Members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. It's not often that, pretty much, I, as a police officer, get to come up and speak about someone in the community, but if one of our themes in the Las Vegas Metro Police Department is partners with the community, Mr. Miramontes is the epitome of partners with the community. As a community-oriented policing officer and a Hart team member, which is a Hispanic-American Research Team member, I work with the community day in and day out, and I have built a good relationship with Mr. Miramontes and his family. And so, he takes pride, as has been mentioned before, in where he lives and what he does. And basically, he really cleans up, literally cleans up, the neighborhood every morning when I go out. He's out there with his broom and dustpan, picking stuff up. So, if that's not the epitome of keeping your neighborhood clean, I don't know what is. So, I really congratulate him, and thank you for this opportunity to pretty much highlight a good citizen of our city. Thank you very much to all.
Thank you, Officer Cienega. I don't know if you'd like to speak, say a couple of words? Would you enjoy doing that for us? We would very much like to hear from you today.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Baba Coffin and official David Cienega, and to all those that have accompanied us here, muchas gracias.
He said thank you in English. Well, he's nervous. He's bilingual. And I think we can always use talent like this. So, thank you again for being here. What a wonderful family you have, truly. You look like me when I was your age, too, young man. Thank you very much. Yeah? Okay. Thank you for being up with us.
Congratulations. Eric is a big congratulations. Notice his son Eric is taller than he is. Boy, oh, boy. What would you like? Okay. Can we come on in closer, so we can get? Here we are. Here's our picture. Thank you. Thank you for that. Those scheduled to be with us for the next item couldn't make it, unfortunately, to the meeting, so we'll move on to Councilman Barlow, recognizing a local business for its service to the community as part of Black History Month. Councilman Barlow, where are you?
Thank you so very much, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. I have the privilege and the honor of recognizing such an outstanding organization. We are honored to recognize the KCP FM radio station, Power 88, for their upcoming 40-year anniversary, which will be officially in October, but in recognition of African-American History Month, I thought it was only fitting that we recognize the radio station. And at this time, I would like to ask that their general manager, Mr. Craig Knight, come forward as I share with you a few of the accolades in which Power 88, your sole school station, has brought to this community since 1972. KCP FM 88 first hit the airwaves in October of 1972, the year I was born, with (laughing). I'm not going to repeat what he said. With 10 watts of power, 10 watts of power. I think my radio at home has 10 watts of power, Mr. Knight. With 10 watts of power, currently, they are operating with more than 10,000 watts in broadcasting in HD radio as well, not only locally but internationally due to the technology today over the Internet. KCP is a highly respected radio station in the Las Vegas community. They have been a longstanding pillar in our community in which many have come to depend on for local news and public information. Over the past four decades, KCP has played a vital role in many lives, from providing the community with information on health and awareness, education, politics, legal issues, housing, finance, spirituality, and entertainment to bring a platform and outlet and development base for career-minded individuals looking to enter various professions in this field. They have truly been available to our community. KCP have listeners throughout the Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Henderson, Boulder City, and surrounding communities. KCP provides music to its well over 150,000 listeners, plus they have the ability to reach, as I mentioned before, listeners globally through the social media outlets. As Award 5 Councilman, I've come to rely on the services offered by KCP. Whenever called upon, they are readily available to assist in blasting Award 5 events and preparing public service announcements. Oftentimes, KCP and their employees get directly involved with my events. They donate hours of community service, as well as provide a live remote to ensure the success of the event. I am grateful for the collaboration KCP shares with the city of Las Vegas, and it is with great appreciation that I have this opportunity to publicly thank KCP and their entire staff in all that they do for the residents of the city of Las Vegas. And now, we, the mayor, members of the Las Vegas City Council, do hereby proclaim February 1st, 2012, KCP Day in the city of Las Vegas in observance of African-American History Month. Mr. Knight. So, if you don't mind sharing with us some of the vision, or the vision for the station, and also, if you don't mind recognizing the staff and personalities that we have here with us here from the station, Mr. Knight. And also, Mr. Knight, I just put him on the spot, is his father is a very good friend of mine, his mother and father is a very good friend of mine, Bubba Knight, if you remember from Gladys Knight and the Pips. Gladys Knight is his aunt, and Bubba Knight from the Pips is his dad, and if you can see, he looks just like his daddy.
Excuse me. I can't believe it. I know your father. I mean, when he was a little boy, almost. How could you be so old? And where'd you get all the money for owning this radio station? Was he? Oh, you don't yet. I like that. What a handsome man. I know your clothes are magnificent. You're pretty well off. Yay for Las Vegas!
Viva Las Vegas! I know, I just embarrassed Craig, but we just love your parents and your family, man, and thank you for the wonderful job that you're doing for Power 88. Thank you so very much. Mr. Knight. Thank you. How do you follow the mayor after that? First, give an honor to God and my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. On behalf of the station, KCP staff and management, we want to thank the honorable mayor for honoring us, fellow councilmen, Councilman Ricky Barlow, and also, congratulations to Councilman Wolfson and Councilman Ross, and also Councilwoman Tarkanian, we can't forget that. And I've asked one of my longstanding employees, he's one of our longest-standing employees here for 35 years, on their personality, Mr. David Lee Ruffin. He started in 1977 in the month of August, so he'll be celebrating 35 years with the station as well. The vision of KCP is to continue to provide information to the community, not just locally, but nationally and globally, information about healthcare, everything from healthcare to housing, information that can help us develop and grow our community, and let everyone know that we're not the only one going through something. This is happening across the nation. And with some of our national programming, you can hear what's going on in different communities, that we share some of the same common problems and also solutions that we can get from other communities that we haven't received here yet. So, KCP is about connecting everyone and keeping everyone vibrant in the community and hopeful. Amen? And at this time, I would like to ask the rest of my staff to come up here for a photo op, but yes, please come forth. But we thank you. We humbly receive this, and we just thank you, thank you, thank you. God bless you. Thank you so very much. You're right, Councilman Ross, keep up the great work. Yes, Patricia Cunningham, as well as Commissioner Lawrence Weekly hosts radio shows, and of course, Ramon Savoy, and I may be missing a few, but I know Franklin G., of course. Yeah. And so, all of these are various personalities and staff members from Power 88. I also want to add, we had more staff members here, but they had to get to work.
And there'd be too many for the camera. We're having trouble being seen. Where is my shortest councilperson? Mrs. Tarkanian, could you get a little closer in? And Mr. Coffin, where are you? We lost you. Oh, there he is. You're reduced. You're not short.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
No, I just wanted to say congratulations once again, and thank you all so very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Singer, too. Are you a singer also?
Straight news, straight news.
Wow, great voice.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and I know Patricia Cunningham was the grand marshal of the Martin Luther King Day Parade that we just had. So, this is wonderful, and she has been wonderful along with Commissioner Weekly when you're running for office. You can get on their program, so that's wonderful. For our next item, Mayor Protem Stavros Anthony will recognize a dance group that has been seen around the world. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure to recognize a remarkable group of performers from Korea called The Little Angels. The Little Angels Children's Folk Ballet of Korea will be bringing their World Peace Tour to our town next week to honor Korean War veterans, as well as heroes all over the world. At this point, I'd like to call the podium two members of the United Peace Federation that are organizing the World Peace Tour, James Gavin and Dan Stein. Would you gentlemen come up here, please? You can get a picture after. Come on up here. The Korean War 60th Anniversary Memorial Committee started in 2010 to pay tribute and express gratitude to the men and women of the 22 United Nation-member nations that sent troops and humanitarian aid to Korea during the Korean War and immediate aftermath. Those individuals went to Korea and fought bravely to save Korea freedom and independence, which paved the way for Korea's great prosperity today. The total number of United Nations and United States troops that were killed, wounded, and captured reached over 190,000. They came to defend Korea's freedom and Korea's survival. Korea has never forgotten those UN soldier sacrifices and will forever be grateful to those countries that came to their aid, especially when their national life was at stake. In 1962, The Little Angels Folk Ballet of Korea was founded to convey to the people of the world the peace-loving spirit of the Korean people and a taste of the beautiful culture and arts produced throughout Korea's 5,000-year history. Beginning in June of 2010, The Little Angels Korean Folk Ballet traveled to 22 UN-member nations that sent troops and humanitarian aid to Korea during the Korean conflict. I believe we have some video of The Little Angels performing. They're not in town as of yet, but do we have that video? Okay, there you go. That's them performing, and interesting, Councilman Coffin said he saw these girls 25 years ago performing in Korea. 25 years ago, huh? Okay, very good. I won't say anything else besides that. Their purpose has been to express their heartfelt thanks and gratitude to the Korean people, to all the Korean War veterans and their families for their noble sacrifices. We deeply appreciate The Little Angels' efforts, and on behalf of the City Council and the mayor, I want to thank them for coming to Las Vegas to honor the Korean War veterans who live here in Las Vegas and fought bravely to help that country. The Little Angels Children's Folk Ballet of Korea will perform at Caesar's Palace Forum Ballroom on Saturday, February 11th, this year, at 6:00 p.m., and the performance will be held for Korean War veterans together with their families. All military personnel and their families will be provided free tickets, compliments of the Korean War 60th Anniversary Memorial Committee. So, on that note, I'd like to present a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the mayor, myself, and the entire City Council, to Jim and Dan from the United Peace Federation, to be presented to The Little Angels when they're in town next Saturday. So, thank you very much, gentlemen. Like to say something?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Mayor Goodman, Dr. Anthony, City Council members, we thank you very much for honoring Korean War veterans and all the veterans in the state of Nevada for this event. I just wanted to mention that this is a big deal. The President of the United States supported their world tour. This is actually Nancy Pelosi, George Bush Senior, George Bush Junior, you know, all the presidents recently, President Clinton, all supported this tour around the world. And the main reason they supported it is to support Korean War veterans. As Dr. Anthony said, 37,000 Americans gave their lives in that war. Here in Nevada, thousands of our citizens in Nevada sacrificed to lend their time and efforts for that war, and over 100 people died from Nevada in that war. So, this is a huge sacrifice that people have made. We want to honor those people. If you know veterans, Korean War veterans, if you know any veteran, we'd like to welcome them to this event at Caesar's Palace. Let us know. We'll be around here. We can get you tickets so that we can honor our veterans for this event. Again, I want to thank very much Mayor Goodman, Dr. Anthony, and the whole City Council for all their great support for this event. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a number somebody can call to get tickets? Do you have that?
Yeah, 608-7640.
Again, the event is free to military personnel, and please, let's get out there and recognize these kids that are coming out here from Korea to pay tribute to our soldiers. So, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you so much. I will tell you that we have a wonderful Korean community here, and they have been here, many of them, for a long time. You all remember who's been here for over 30 years, the Kim Sisters. They appeared at Sahara Hotel, and then the Kim Brothers also appeared. And when you mention 60 years ago, it sort of chokes me, because my brother-in-law, who's alive and well, was a frogman, a former, what is today a SEAL, in the Korean War. And so, as everyone joined together to keep the freedom of the people and our wonderful Korean community, we really have a wonderful community here. So, this is an honor, and I hope everybody hears this and comes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to add one additional word about the Universal Peace Federation. I've attended several conferences of the UPF. They've had a couple here in Las Vegas. They are probably not on your radar screen, and yet they are doing the work of the world for you and I, and their intention is to try to keep that hotspot in the world a little cooler, if possible. Unification, universal, it all came from the same root word of trying to get the Korean people together without having to fight another war. Remember, those of you who don't know your history, peace has never been declared in Korea 60 years after that war. We are still in a truce situation. I've visited the village in between the war, in between the lines. It's not a happy place. We have a couple of hundred troops inside the DMZ at any given time, and they are tripwired. Unfortunately for them, they will not survive should there be an attack from the north. But they are people, probably some from Nevada, some from all over the country, and other countries as well. And of course, you know, I have seen, as Mayor Protem said, I have seen The Little Angels perform. They will take your breath away, so I hope you can go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin. For our final item, I have the pleasure of thanking one of our councilmembers for his service to our community. Could you step forward, you small person? As you know, this wonderful man, Councilman Wolfson, is our senior-most councilperson, gray hair, and like my husband, he needs it sprayed down. It looks like your hands in an electric socket. I will tell you, he is leaving us to become the next district attorney for Clark County, and we are so proud. He has submitted his resignation to us. I know with probably pain in his heart, a little bit of nostalgia, but effective February 21st, he will be, in fact, serving as DA. He now will have, which I thought was incredible, he has, as you know, he has a private practice, and he has a part-time job as city council. Now, he's going to have to work every day, all the time, and probably have to go in on Saturdays, too, maybe Sundays. I'm not sure how he's going to handle that. He's going to find some time, as his schedule is always booked, with the up- He's going to find some time, as his schedule is always booked, with up to this point, with exciting world travel, Hawaii, one of his favorites, and playing a lot of golf, so all you men who play golf, or lady, please, keep boning up, because you'll probably beat him next time. Councilman Coffin has been with the city since 2004, Wolfson, what did I say? I do, because you just stood there. I'm so glad, you have been helping me through this process for eight months, and I'm going to miss you. He has always been a voice for the residents of Ward 2, like the lawyer that he is, we have always been able to count on him to point out to us given questions that needed to be answered, and he's helped us always come to the right decisions, I know my husband relied on him oftentimes. Also, like the lawyer he is, his questions can sometimes become drag-on responses. I'm used to that, obviously, because of my husband, but I also have two sons who are lawyers, so it can become very boring, both here and there at home. Of course, even best lawyers occasionally make mistakes, the example that comes to mind was when the council was hearing an application, which I happened to be watching City Council that day, for a new Taekwondo studio in business. The councilman must have been hard of hearing, because he didn't get the, it is classic, didn't get the applicant's name, and was not very familiar with the martial arts, because for the rest of the item, which was lengthy, he referred to the applicant as Mr. Kwon Do. Can't beat that, but he can smile, right? Were you here watching, I bet, it is forever for you. But with all joking aside, the councilman has been a big proponent of the city, helping to create the new employee for economic times that we find ourselves in, I know the city's management team has worked closely with Councilman Wolfson, and we're on, well on our way to achieving the goal that he has helped to inspire. The councilman has been an indispensable member of this council, and I know he will continue to work hard in his new position. I want to present you with a proclamation on behalf of myself and our council members that makes, I guess you're sharing it, February 1st, Steve Wolfson Day, in recognition of all his support efforts, and so this proclamation reads, Mr. Wolfson is, and not Mr. Coffin, Mr. Wolfson is our senior-most councilman, which will end, and then we will have a senior-most councilwoman. How he will find time for a real job, he's our world cruise traveler, and when he isn't on the golf course or in Hawaii, he's at home doing his own laundry, and cooking his own food. Whereas he fancies himself quite the interior decorator, all you have to do is come to Floor 10, and you will see the color palette of his office, it is now known as the Blue Room. Whereas his best qualities, of course, are his communication skills, arrogant and aloof never come up when one thinks of Mr. Wolfson. And whereas Mr. Wolfson is always, if you would turn for the audience, immaculately dressed, I have never seen you other than immaculately dressed, and believes that the family that grooms together stays together, having weekly manicures and pedicures as a family outing. And whereas Councilman Wolfson is always... You can't leave us without a little bit, nobody's gonna give themselves up for you, my sweet man. And whereas Councilman Wolfson is genuinely attentive to applicants in his ward who come before City Council, just ask Mr. Kwon Do. And seriously, whereas Councilman Steve Wolfson has proudly served the City of Las Vegas Council since June of 2004, representing the citizens of Ward 2 so well, and therefore now I, Mayor, City of Las Vegas, County of Clark, State of Nevada, proudly proclaim with greatest gratitude, February 1st, 2012, Steve Wolfson Day here in the City of Las Vegas, and ask all citizens to wish him well in his next endeavor as our District Attorney. And we congratulate you, we'll miss you, we will miss you. Now, we have a few more. It's awesome, you deserve this. Okay, we do have a few more things, would you like to present the next, thank you very much, that's for Mr., please, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve with you the past six years, seven years with you on this council, and I have to, I didn't spill the beans on us with the Mayor. Yeah, I was busy yesterday, but I will say this, and I'll say this for the audience, and so everyone understands, every year, of course, we have the State of the City address, and every year, Councilman Wolfson sits next to me on stage in front of all of the residents in the city, and television, and he hands me a great big candy bar in front of the public, and it's quite uncomfortable, but my departing gift to you will be this very small candy bar. As a symbol of my affection and friendship towards you, you have served the residents of Ward 2, sorry, and the citizens of the City of Las Vegas with honor and distinction, and it is an honor for me to call you my friend, and congratulations on becoming our District Attorney.
And of course, this is a city flag, so you will always remember us, and make sure in your office, even though you serve everybody, that you will have a special spot for this. Now, if any other members of our council, which I know they all would, would like to say a few words, let me start right here behind me with Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say two things, number one, Councilman Wolfson, Steve, Wolfson, Councilman Wolfson, Steve, you have done a great job representing your ward, and I know you spend a lot of time with your constituents and the residents of Ward 2, and you're leaving that place better today than when you got there, and they appreciate it, and I appreciate it, but I do want to mention one thing I have a concern about, and you know, the City Council job is a part-time job, so you can get involved in hobbies and have maybe another job, that sort of thing, the District Attorney's job is a full-time job, and I know the Mayor mentioned that you're a golfer, and with all due respect, Mr. District Attorney, and I may, maybe I'm gonna get prosecuted for this, but you're not very good golfer, and since you're gonna be working full-time, you're probably gonna get worse, so I'm looking forward to golfing with you in the future and taking your money, so congratulations.
Thank you. Councilman, unlike my colleagues, you're the only one on the council that can beat me in golf, so, so that means I'm not that good. But being that you are leaving the council, I do want to say thank you so very much for everything that you've done for me to basically help with my professional growth on the council, and the countless times we had an opportunity to spin out on the golf course, I hope it doesn't end here, I look forward to playing with you, whenever you need to vet and talk about all of the crazy things that are taking place inside of the DA's office, call me, we'll go out and play golf, and we'll just basically have a great time out on the golf course, congratulations, man.
Councilman Coffin?
Thank you very much, stand next to me. I'm actually happy to see him leave. We always get a kick out of photographing beside each other. Steve, I gotta tell you that I am gonna miss you, because you've always been a really thoughtful person, I, we've never played golf together, I've only been on the council six months, I respect the process that you went through, it wasn't easy to be selected as a District Attorney, but I believe you gave honest and truthful answers to that commission when they selected you, I know you're gonna do some different things than the former District Attorney, and I think you're gonna handle things for a lot of our people differently, and I know that because I've worked with you, and you have a sensitive side, despite the arrogant and aloof in the proclamation, which will never see the light of day after today, I'm sure, you've been good, very helpful to me, thoughtful approach, helping me learn how to solve the problems, in my word, you gave me time from your duties to help me there, and so I know you'll be very giving of your time to that very large staff, you're gonna be working 80, 90 hours a week, and I know you'll earn every dime you get. Yep, there's no doubt about that now, you have went for the big time, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I just want to say that he's been my buddy on the council, when I first started, I'd ask him a question, and try and find out what we were doing or where we were going, and he'd say to me, "I don't know, I've only been here six months longer than you have." But he helped me with everything, he had helped me with my computer, but what he did mostly was he helped extend my understanding of diverse thinking in so many areas of which I'd never thought before, he did that to me, and you know what, those type of people are the people that you treasure in life, because anybody can give you the same type of information, anybody can go along with you, or anybody can get angry with you when you have a diverse opinion, but here, I had someone that he may disagree, and he gave me good thoughts, and I was able to incorporate them, I know how much he cares about the people in Ward 2, I know how hard he's worked for them, I think the District Attorney's office is very, very lucky, and we're gonna miss you, we truly are, and I must say that I don't think I've had as much fun in the last decade as watching Councilman Wolfson and Mayor Oscar Goodman give comments during our CMO briefings, they were hilarious, they were comments made that we will never, ever forget, I'm sure, so he made it fun, as well as educational, and we'll miss you a lot, Steve, and thank you for your courage, I wanted to say that one last thing, when I was a new councilperson, there came a vote before the board, and you know, I think it was a 6-1 vote, and surprisingly, I was the one, and, but anyway, on the 6-1, that was a choke, but surprisingly, when information came out that indicated the vote should have gone in another way, under what I would consider pressure from powerful individuals, he came forward, he made the motion to hear it again, and when we heard it again, it was 7-0 in the other direction, and that took courage, people don't understand how hard it is to make steps, to make decisions that sometimes can hurt you politically, can hurt you otherwise, so thank you so much, Steve, for being a good friend.
So, without further ado, but not going on and on, we wish you the best, we thank you, we are honored that you have served with us all these years, it's your turn to say goodbye to the city.
Well, it's not really goodbye, I'm just going down the street. This kind of came as a surprise, I had no idea this was going to happen, so, may I have four and a half hours? I just went through a four and a half hour interview, and evidently, I came out all right. Thank you so much, Mayor Goodman, and Mayor Oscar Goodman, because he brought me along starting seven and a half years ago, good luck to you, you'll be a great mayor, I could spend five or 10 minutes on each of you, thanking you, you're all very special in your own way, and you know that, I am a better golfer than you, Stavros, you know that. You can make fun up here, but I beat you every single time, I'm gonna miss you all very much, I'm gonna miss Ms. Fretwell a lot, you're the best, your predecessor, Dr. Selby, was great, you have succeeded in his shoes, and your staff that is sitting to your side, I want to thank you all, you've been the best. Sorry about this short jokes part, but you're short, what can I say? And my thanks and my appreciation goes out to all of the city employees, I know some of you are sitting in the audience right now, some are not, I've loved being a City Councilman, I really have, I've been a City Councilman for seven and a half years, and I've loved every day, I think the fact that I am a City Councilman helped me get the job as your next District Attorney, because I've learned so much from the folks I've worked with, from my constituents, and from my job here as a City Councilman, which I hope will make me the best District Attorney I can be. I've often said that I consider myself to be the luckiest City Councilman in the world. Your husband used to say he's the happiest mayor, and I had to come up with something to follow that all the time, and I realized that I truly was and am the luckiest City Councilman in the world, because I've been given the opportunity to serve the citizens of Las Vegas, and the citizens of Ward 2, which is a special place, so thank you to people that helped me get elected seven and a half years ago, and elected a couple times after that, there's a lot of people out there, I'm looking at some of them right now, that have been very special to me over the years, and I want to thank you folks. You know, one thing I'm not gonna miss is you, Anthony, I'm just not gonna miss you, Anthony, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Anthony, I'm not gonna miss you, but there are so many things, I know we've been sitting here all morning, so let me wrap it up, there's so many things I'm going to miss about being a City Councilman, but I'm not going very far, as your next District Attorney, instead of representing 100,000 people in Ward 2, or 500,000 people in the City of Las Vegas, I'm now going to be serving about 2 million Clark County residents, and to wrap it up, I've listened to the concerns of the residents, I plan to be the best District Attorney you've ever seen, so wish me luck, and thank you all so much for this send-off.
You're the best, we wish you good luck, and we are gonna have no break, we're gonna go right on into our meeting, thank you. Okay, everyone, let's take our seats, let's get our councilpeople back, and Councilman Wolfson, bless you, you're still with us, so we'll look, I'm humming again. Alrighty, everybody here, yes? Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action, the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited, all comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items, if anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come forward to the podium and state your name, we will set the time at one minute, please, please, sir.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farley, 240 North, 19th Street. Councilman Coffin, on item number 30, that place is just not working out there, and on items number 37 and 38, could somebody explain the temporary pistol permit, I thought pistol permits were given to individuals, not companies.
Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward and state your name.
Hello, I'm Rasan Joshua Collins, a public minister for the Lord Jesus Christ, and under number 42, the, looks like a casino, they're trying to do is a non-reg restricted gaming license, working with the homeless, I see a lot of them are spending their checks, whether it be social security, whatever, in the casinos, and just curious, is anything can be done to keep them from doing that, because that's a big waste of government, you know, money, taxpayer money, and I definitely think it needs to be stopped and help them with their own addictions, things like that, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward.
I was gonna say 15, 45, and 47, but I'm gonna pass, thank you, have a good day.
Okay, thank you, that's a nice, goodness, a birthday gift. Yes, sir.
Anyway, good morning, Alan Cartier, President of Cartier Insurance, but most importantly, a native born Las Vagan, Steve Wolfson, I want to thank you for your service to our community, and also... community. And also, I'm really excited about Zappos. I think that's going to be an excitement for Las Vegas. It's going to bring some youth. It's going to bring some employees down here. And I'm really excited about the energy that's going to be coming down here in the city of Las Vegas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. We will move on to item number 10. This business item for possible action. Any items from the morning session, the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem, Anthony?
I have no items, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we need to vote on that? Nope, I didn't think so. Item, agenda item 11, also business item for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the Joint City Council Redevelopment Agency Meeting of January 18, 2012, and the regular city council meeting of January 18, 2012. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Vote on the motion. Post, please. Den? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move on to Parks Leisure Neighborhood Services Discussion and Possible Action. On the Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program, YNAP, Grant Review Board recommends to allocate $24,927 for 31 youth-initiated programs, all wards. Mr. Harson.
Thank you, and good morning, Mayor and Council. The Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program offers grants up to $1,000 to youth to implement projects to improve their neighborhoods. The program challenges youth to identify a community issue or need, and then develop a project to address it and that need. The YNAP program is operating under a $25,000 annual budget, and this year, the YNAP Board is recommending 31 neighborhood projects to be funded for a total of $24,927. The 31 youth groups are pledging over $800,000 in return to that money in volunteer labor donations and/or in-kind donations. Gabrielle Newell and Kennedy Williams, both YNAP Board members, are here to give today's recommendations.
Thank you very much. If you'll each again repeat your names when you speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Gabrielle Newell, and I'm a senior at the Leadership in Law Preparatory Academy at Canyon Springs High School. I am also chair of the YNAP Board. This was my second year serving on the Board, and I again was very impressed, not only with my peers serving on the Board as volunteers, but also with the youth groups that are giving so much back to the community as volunteers. Thank you very much for this opportunity. This year, the YNAP Grant Review Board is recommending 31 projects for funding. Fifteen community service projects, such as collecting supplies for the less fortunate and hosting community events. Five community improvement projects, such as restoring areas of neighborhood schools and community centers. Eleven community education projects, such as peer mentoring and increasing youth awareness of community health and safety issues through conferences and workshops. Together, these projects will provide the city with a match of volunteer hours, donations, and labor in the amount of $800,000. I would like to recognize each project. Almon Youth Service Learning Project Not in Our Neighborhood, AKA Neon, $775. Arbor View Deca Direct the Way, $775. Becker Middle School Assisting A Tree as Age, $650. Celestial Youth Garden Group, $775. Simron Memorial High School, $775. CC Democratic Black Caucus Youth Group, $1,000. CSN High School National Honor Society, $775. CSN Student Council, $775. Downtown Youth Council, $775, $100, sorry. Downtown Youth Council, $775. East Las Vegas Youth Council, $775. Family Leadership, $775. Family Leadership, $775.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
My name is Kennedy Williams. I go to Valley High School. This is my first year being on YNAP, and I'm the vice chair. I'm happy to be a part of this program, and I would like to name the rest of the groups. Fostering Kids, Bunny's RS, $974. Gerheim Heights City Council, $775. Historic Beverly Green Neighborhood Association, the Beverly Green Gazette, $1,000. Innovations International Charter School of Nevada, Hugs of Hope, $1,000. Keeping Everyone's Eyes on the Neighborhood, or Keen Comfort Blankets, $325. Loomis Elementary School, Little Gestures, $990. Marybelly SWAT Team, Teens Helping Teens, $838. Quiet Storm Youth Council Advisory, Young Outspoken Voices, $510. Stupac Council, or Youth Council, Treks for Treads, $1,000. Symbolic Youth Networking Council, Can Can Dance, $775. Symbolic Youth Networking Council, Features for Teachers, $775. The Meadows Varsity Cheer Team, Dancing with the Cheerleaders, $775. The Monkey Gym, Inspirational Mural for Children and Families of Special Needs, $740. The Trinity Dance Academy, Young Performers Showcase in Recognition of Young Community Leaders, $775. Umoja, Sisters in Society Taking Action, Rites of Passage Mentoring Program, Youth Council, or Youth Conference 2012, $1,000. Veterans Memorial Youth Council, Tringar Hands to the Homeless, $890. West Las Vegas Arts Center and Performance Arts Ensemble, West Las Vegas Arts Center Performance Ensemble Outreach, $1,000.
Wonderful. Any comments, questions from our city council?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Ladies Councilmen Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. You guys do such a great things in this community. I am so thrilled to death, and I do this every year. We give out this money. And all of the adults that are engaged with this process, and the city staff, and Director Harson's, I mean, everybody that's involved with us, this is a great opportunity for youth in this community to get engaged in that civic process and giving back to the community. And I want you all to know how much that means to me as a Las Vagan, because you're doing it. And that's what makes a better city. It makes a better community, and it gives the youth in this community the opportunity to lead, to plan, and to direct. And I'm just so impressed with all the kids that are involved with this and the adults that are doing it, too. I just want to say thank you very much. I want to make one more comment. This year, I see in the backup data here, you hit every ward. Every ward is participating in the YNAP program, and I think that's phenomenal. It says a lot about what we're doing in the city of Las Vegas. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilman Ross, that the youth of this community, they're just amazing youngsters. And I really want to thank the city staff, as well as all of the parents, as well as advisors that basically provide the guidance to the young people, getting them involved in community service. One thing about any community that makes every community a great place is when you have community involvement, you have the opportunity to introduce our young people to the municipal process, getting them involved early as far as providing and taking care of their community, and giving back at a very early age. And that's what's going to continue to keep the blood warm running through the vein of any community. And I want to thank all of the youth who are a part of this Las Vegas Valley, who are doing all that they can to make sure that they're getting the education and the professional tools needed in order to replace we city leaders sitting here for generations to come. So my hat goes off to you, and thank you so very much for your community outreach and support in giving back at such an early age. Thank you.
You are wonderful. We're very proud of you. I see Mrs. Toussaint back there. Did you want to make comment, too?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Donna Toussaint. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am a board member on YNAP. I just have to tell you, half of our board is made up of students who are in high school. And when you look at these youngsters and the maturity that they have, you know that we're going to be fine in the future. We really are. Not only does this teach them how to do a collaborative process and how to evaluate situations, it teaches them how to be on a board, and it also gives them community credit for going on to college. And the young people that do the projects, I mean, they're just amazing. I mean, we have anyone from making pillows for homeless kids to being in a robot contest. But what it does more than anything else is it teaches them how to give back to their community, and it's so important. And as a little girl who grew up here in Las Vegas, I wish I was afforded this opportunity. But I also want to say that the staff is just incredible. I mean, we're there on weekends. We're there late night. And Marty Toledo, and Lisa Campbell, and Alma, I have to tell you, we're like, our group, even though we're wonderful, we're like herding cats, and they keep everything smooth. And I just want to say thank you very much to Steve Harson and his staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. And Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I just wanted to echo, first of all, Councilman Ross's comments, and also echo Councilman Barlow's comments. I've seen what you've done in the community, and I know how much you contribute back. Each year, I'm so very impressed with the ideas you come up with and the different ways of helping others in the community. I've been fortunate enough to have some direct involvement with some of the groups who, at different times, have won these grants. And maybe it doesn't sound like a whole lot, $763 or $1,020, but that amount of money that the city provides to so many different areas through their youngsters is a great contributor to the citizenship that we want to have. And I just want to thank you very much. I know how much it means to you, and I want to convey to you how much it means to all of us, what you're doing. Thank you.
And in light of that, would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve.
There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. Congratulations. Your efforts, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we will go back on agenda. We are going to consent agenda, which is starting with item 12. Items 12 through 44, with any exceptions? Do we have?
Forty-four.
Just 44, which is at the end. The consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward, separate, and we will do that with item number 44? Is there a motion, please?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
I would like to pull item number 23 forward.
Twenty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
Item 23, also pull. Okay. And now, with that restated, with pulling item 23 and tailing with 44, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 12 through 44, except for 44 and 23.
There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. That carries, and we will now move on to item 23. Subject for possible action to authorize staff to negotiate and purchase real property easements and temporary construction easements for the F Street reopening project on F Street between Bonanza and Washington Avenue, $40,000. Public Works Capital Fund Project. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor and Council. For the sake of full transparency, I would like to make sure that whenever items concerning F Street arise on our council, although it's under consent, I would like for it to be pulled forward so that we can place on the record and keep this conversation out in the public for full transparency purposes as relates to what's taking place with this item. So I ask that our Director of Public Works come forward, Mr. Jorge Savantes, to explain to the community as it relates to this item, what this item represents, and moving forward.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jorge Savantes, Department of Public Works. This item is to acquire two easements to relocate some Las Vegas Valley water district water meters as part of the project, and it's also to provide temporary construction easements along the furniture of F Street between 915 and Washington. As part of the project, we're going to be reconstructing those sidewalks, and so we just need some temporary construction easements to be able to work on the sidewalk area.
Okay. And thank you, Jorge, for bringing that, bringing this forward and making sure that it was explained from a technical standpoint, what we're doing here with item number 23. So with that, Mayor and Council, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions on this item.
Thank you. We have comment from Councilman Coffin, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. In keeping with my statements in the redevelopment committee meeting on September 7, I will not be voting for any additional funds on F Street because we don't have the money to complete that project. And I think pouring any money into it at this point, regardless of whether it is a small amount like this, is a waste of money. So I'll be voting no. I think we all understand my feelings on that, and Councilman Barlow's, and this is understood to be something that I feel that, as those of you know, the city was mandated by Assembly Bill 304 in 2009 to punch a hole through that freeway and essentially create a road to nowhere. I propose to vote no. I won't say anymore about it, but I'm sure we're going to have some extensive discussions on it on the record here very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to ask city clerk, in response to the request from Councilman Barlow, anything in relation to the project on F Street, please, to make sure that it is so noted, and we are either briefed, and so you can address that. Any other comments, questions? There is a motion on the floor? Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the tail item, which was item agenda item 44. Resolution R22012 for possible action to approve a resolution overruling complaints, protests, and objections, and confirming the final assessment role for Special Improvement District Number 1507, Jones Boulevard, Elkhorn Road to Horse Drive, and Grand Teton Drive, Maverick Street to Decatur Boulevard. Councilman Ross, this is your ward, and we have, would you, well, we'll start with Mr. Savantes, please.
Yes, for the record, Jorge Savantes, Department of Public Works, and with me is Lori Dunster, with our Special Improvement District Manager. On December 7, we had a public hearing to receive any concerns on the workmanship quality of the work that was constructed out there, or on the final assessment role of Special Improvement District 1507. Staff has reviewed the concerns that were placed on the record during that public meeting, and also those concerns that were submitted in writing to the city clerk. Today's item is not a public hearing, and it is to approve a resolution overruling these complaints and objections, and continuing the final assessment for the district, formation of the district.
Thank you. Do you want to come up, state your name, sir, please?
My name is Steve Burdick. I was here at the meeting on December 7. And I think, as you recall, there was some confusion as to the intent of the letter that invited us to the meeting. It seemed to indicate that we would have the opportunity to voice our concerns or complaints or arguments as regards to the assessment. It was explained to us at that time that this, that wasn't the venue for the meeting. After much discussion, we were promised by the council that we would have an opportunity to be heard on this at a later date. We heard nothing from the city until I received a letter on January 24, which was, and then two days to get it, January 26, which is a Thursday, informing us that come February 1, that the city was going to, staff was going to recommend that everything that they had said before was good. We were going to go forward with it. There would be no public hearing, which seems to deny us the opportunity for the hearing to present our concerns in an organized fashion, because there's several residents concerned. I called Mr. Ross's office, and he offered us the opportunity. I really don't think it's fair that it takes the city a month and a half to respond to our concerns. They give us two days not to be heard. They just say, "We're going to proceed on." We were promised the opportunity to put our concerns together. We're asking at this time that we be given that extension of time. There are several legitimate concerns and figures and processes that I'm unaware of. I'm not familiar with the, I'm not a realtor, or broker, or an attorney, so I'm not familiar with all the terminology there. But I am concerned with the original assessment was $55,000 to my property. That would be my assessment. My next indication was $117,000. And we can't attribute it to inflation, because the leno foot, footage that was estimated is the same, yet the prices are different, and there were several things added. All of this testifies, I think, to the fact that we need time to give it consideration, to find out how they arrived at these figures, and whether or not it's fair.
Councilman?
I want to give them the opportunity to be heard, certainly. And that's, I think, is what we had indicated to the residents who live out there now. Steve, are you asking?
for us to even postpone this longer, so you guys have more time to prepare what you want to say? Because here's where we're at. I mean, I have the entire history and documentation of this entire SID process. I can't speak to the short notification of last week. I can't speak to that. I mean, I think the city's done everything it's supposed to do in regards to an SID. Hearings were held, meetings were held. Jorge will back that up with dates and figures and the whole nine yards. And what's important to understand, too, in this entire process of upgrading Jones Boulevard, we used lots and lots of money from the Regional Transportation Commission, and I think the adjacent properties were responsible for about eight feet, and some laterals, and that sort of thing, Jorge. Why don't you do, what I want to do is make sure you guys had a chance to be heard. Let me ask you this question right now, before Jorge says something. Do you want us to postpone this, so you get the rest of the neighbors, so they can share their voice as well? That's what I'm asking you. Is that what you like?
Yes, and I think it's legitimate. Back in 2005, the property values were much, much different, 10 times what they are today. I received an estimate of $55,000, which would be shared with two property owners on that particular parcel. To raise it to 117,000 without adequate explanation as to how you arrived at that figure, there's several questions that these figures generate. I think we need time to determine whether or not it was fair and just that we'd be given this assessment.
And I don't know how this affects what we're trying to accomplish with this agenda item, Jorge, in regards to time. Does that diminish our capacity to do something if we postpone this a while longer, and maybe each of the property owners meet one-on-one with Public Works to determine these assessments? And Steve, I want you to understand something here. We've already spent the money. I mean, we know what the money is, and we've spent taxpayer dollars that actually came out of our sanitation funds that have to be repaid.
I understand that. But you can, just one example of my concern. Those east of Jones, where said that the assessment was against them, was rolled into their property values, or purchased when they purchased the property. Now, here's my concern. That, those track, housing tracks, were built between 2002, 2005. When I received the estimate of $55,000, was their assessment based on that estimate? And if so, how do you proportionately move that from 55,000 to 117,000 without including them in the obvious increase?
How many, with your permission, Mayor, how many, Steve, property owners do you think are going to have the same issue that you're having right now?
I have no idea, because I don't know that there's a full disclosure as to who was charged what, and why those particular property owners were charged, and others that live nearby and benefit from the same improvements were not included.
Okay. Jorge, can you respond with the mayor's permission?
Certainly, Councilman. Just initially, to talk about the process of the SID. Whenever a resident comes in to build a home, they're responsible for building half of the street, which includes half of the pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights. When we do a public roadway project, we leverage a lot of that improvement with some gas tax money. In this case, whether it was Jones, or whether it was Grand Tetons, they would have had to build 40 feet of pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights. Because we had some gas tax money, we were able to use the gas tax money to do 38 feet, 32 feet of that pavement, and they only paid for eight feet of the pavement, which is a great savings to the residents. And it's a program that we do when there's gas tax money, to be able to do this type of projects. In his particular case on his parcel, he's correct that his original estimate was $55,000. The reasoning that went up was that after the original estimates went out, we received a letter from the owner of record requesting that we extend a main water line to service the property, 12-inch water line, over 300 feet. And so that's what triggered the additional cost. It was after the original estimates went out, and it was from the property owner of record. If you look at the estimates that we gave to all of the properties, they were well within a couple of percentage of what the original estimate was. Some were a little bit higher, some were a bit lower, but not more than a couple of percentage. His was a particular case in that the owner requested we extend water services to it, and so a water main had to be extended to that property.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
So, he's the owner. Is he the guy that requested the additional 200 feet of water lateral?
I'll let Lori just pass forth history, answer that one.
Okay. Because I know, in this process, and since the council understands, all of the property owners were given the opportunity to have water laterals taken to their properties, water mains behind, behind curb, I mean, the whole nine yards, so that they could improve their properties, if they wished to do so, under this Special Improvement District and the dollars that we spent on it. So if you could address that, because I don't know, I mean, he needs to know why his bill went up twice, or doubled, doubled, why his bill doubled.
Yes, Councilman, this is Lori Leonard Dunford, Public Works. The, this is the gentleman and the property that, and on December 7th, there was a title concern. And the property owner of record with the Clark County Assessor's Office at this time, and at the time we created the district, is Paul and Diane Cobb. They are listed as the only owners of this particular two-acre parcel. Mr. Burdick mentioned in, on December 7th, that he has documents that split that parcel. Our office was unaware of that. We followed the Clark County Assessor's ownership records. Mr. and Mrs. Cobb signed, and we recorded an affidavit of waiving consent on the parcel, which authorized us to install 344 feet of 12-inch water main, and a 6-inch water lateral to service the property. This increased his preliminary assessment from the 55,000 he mentions to 123,000, I believe. The, our bids came in lower than that, so the final assessment based on actual costs was 117,133.34.
With the mayor's permission.
Please go on.
Steve, that sounds like the explanation. And you're going to say that you didn't request that water lateral be?
No, what, can, if I can explain, we bought this property in 92. We went to Lawyer's Title of Nevada. We had it split, we thought at the time, between me and another purchaser. We each bought 1.1 acres. We split it north and south, which means my property is the one that fronts Ackerman and Jones Boulevard, which is the, which would bear the brunt of the assessment, because of the streetlights and sidewalks, so forth.
Was the partner Cobb? The Cobb?
No.
No.
There's another individual involved in that. At the time, we let, it was dormant for probably 10 years. And then we were going to build on it, because property values certainly dictated that we, it would be profitable to build on it. In the time we started to build on it, we had the surveys done and so forth. We backed out of it, because property values began to fall, and we didn't think we could recapture the money. I remember our surveyor telling us we had to apply to the water district, but we never followed through on that water, that thing, because the cost of hooking up at that time was quoted at $42,000. And it was just cost prohibitive at that time for proceeds. So we never proceeded beyond that point of building on the property, or developing on the property, until we had sufficient cash. And as it stands now, the property itself is only worth, total property, two acres is worth 150,000, based on the Clark County assessment, and a private assessment I had made on the property, which split in half. That means my property is worth 75,000. And there is people lined up to buy it, at 75. So my concern is, is, you know, disproportionate to the value of the property is the cost, 117. I'm not quite sure the, where we are in the process, as far as when we requested that, and when we pulled back and never followed through on the application to the Las Vegas Water District for, to hook up the water mains. That is what we need time to assess. Plus the fact, the difference in the charge in the streetlights. They said that the streetlights were upgraded to match the ones across the street. Well, the ones across the street, apparently, were at a rate of 15,000, and now they're at a rate of 39,000 for my assessed portion. So I don't know, understand the increase, if it was to match the existing lights that were across the street.
Mayor Goodman, please.
Please.
Whether we go forward today or not, Councilman Ross, I'm going to defer to you. But it's still unclear in my mind who this other party was that apparently filled out an affidavit requesting that the water infrastructure be provided, which was very costly, which caused the increase in the assessment. That is still very foggy in my mind, as to whether or not this gentleman should or should not be responsible for the increase, based upon somebody else's request. So that's something that, in my mind, I mean, I'm not going to be here in two weeks, if there's going to be a vote in two weeks, but if there's going to be a vote here today, I'm still a little hazy on who this other party was that requested the water infrastructure to be provided, which it was. But this gentleman says he's owned the property with a partner for 20 years. Am I missing something there?
Councilman, to address that, the person that requested and signed the affidavits was the owner of record at the time that this was created, and is the current owner of record, based on the assessed information.
Okay, let me stop you right there. Okay. Forgive me for being so direct. You say, when the SID was created, what year was that?
2008.
Okay, so just four years ago. Okay. And you say that he's still the owner of record. Well, then, this gentleman, with all due respect, what standing does he have to come in here, and Brad, you're shaking your head. Sir, what standing do you have to come in to complain about something if you don't own the property?
Well, I have something from Lawyer's Title that's-
I mean, that's the first issue that needs to be decided, is whether, with all due respect to you, sir, whether you own the property. You say you do, but our staff is telling us you don't. Right?
That's correct. And we go off the assessor's information.
Do you have an attorney? Have you had an attorney look at these papers of yours?
Well, he substantiated the fact, Mike Raspeason, that we are a legal owner. He's never been able to determine why it wasn't recorded with the state, what we had done with Lawyer's Title back in 92.
And where, one other question, and then, Councilman Ross, are these, are the Robbs, Robbs, Cobbs, still in Las Vegas?
The records show that they have an address on 2818 Russell Road, so it is, they are still in Las Vegas, and they still show as being the current owner of record.
It would seem to me this is a legal matter between you and them, and if you are, in fact, you're invalid there, the ownership is theirs, they owe the fee. So it need the, the Cobbs, Cobbs. So, Councilman Ross, where do you go from here? I think that needs to be resolved.
Well, I think so, too. And Steve, more, we're looking at this, even from our city attorney's perspective, this may be a, an issue you'll have to take up civilly, with whoever. I mean, we can only go by, and to kind of answer Councilman Wilson's questions about, you know, who even owns this dirt, who owns this property, who requested it, all we can go by is what the county provides us through the assessor roles. Am I correct?
That's correct.
May I ask one more question?
Please.
Have the Cobbs, since they live on Russell Road, have they been assessed this SID penalty?
This is, the item is before you today. To finalize the role for assessment, if you approve this, then we move forward with the assessment to the Cobbs for this improvement.
So, therefore?
The Cobb's bit.
Right. And then your issue is with who owns the property. Because at this point, they're going to be assessed, that amount, not you, if I understand correctly.
That's correct. The assessment goes to the property, who the records show belonged to Paul and Diane Cobb.
So, what we're saying here is that the assessment is going to go through as determined by the city. Our only recourse now is to take legal action against the assessment?
No, the assessment's going to be on Mr., well, whoever they are, Mr. and Mrs., or brother and sister, the Cobb family. They will be assessed. You're not being assessed because of record, you don't own the property.
Mayor Goodman, quick question. Have you been paying property taxes on this property for 20 years?
Yep.
Something is obviously-
That's what our question was. Why was it never recorded?
Well, I mean, that's something that this council doesn't have the ability to handle. It's not within our, yeah, you need to contact a lawyer, sir. That's what I would advise you to do.
So, so, so I have it understanding correct? We have no legal recourse against assessment?
You don't own the property.
Well, if that's determined that I do, and that I'm sure that it does.
Then at that point, then what would, let's, well, we're on the if. I think you need, you'll probably have to go to court and evaluate this.
And Mayor, if I may, and councilmembers, and Jorge, correct me if I'm wrong, but we need to move forward with this, so that he can get to that place. Am I correct? If he's got a title issue, or an issue with who owns what property, that's, he's going to have to deal with that. And Steve, if you want to, I'm not going to advocate this, because we certainly don't need that, but if you need to file something against the city, I think you might have to do that, too. And I'm-
Might we ask our counsel, our wise counsel, Mr. Gerbit, could you please lend some insight here?
Wouldn't comment on the wisdom part. Having listened to what I've heard, it sounds like this piece of property you thought was subdivided at one point in time, for whatever reason, the title wasn't recorded in your name. We've had, at least to the city's knowledge, one owner, at the time of the assessment role, one owner today. That one owner is going to get the one bill. Now, if in the future, you succeed in separating these two parcels, at that point in time, you may get a bill. But as of today, you don't. But whatever dispute exists here, Mayor, in my opinion, is between these two parties, and not between the city of Las Vegas and this gentleman. And therefore, based on what we've heard today, I would ask you to overrule the protest, and follow the recommendation of staff.
Thank you, Mr. Gerbit. The other thing, too, if you've been paying property tax on this property, and perhaps they have been as well, we don't know that information. So there is a recommendation here by our council. I see there's another gentleman behind you. Are you wishing to speak on this particular issue, too?
Yes, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Godson Erushlo. I'm here today because I was here last month, in, last two months, in December the 7th, to dispute the validity of the assessment I received. I'm here for the same concern. It was my understanding that we were supposed to have some kind of a hearing between the Public Works and the community members. Apparently, that did not happen. And I just came back in town. I got an email with reference to coming here today to see, or to hear what is going on. That was why I'm here. By the way, Steve, congratulations on your, I wasn't part of it, for the record. Yeah. And I was also congratulating Steve on your appointment. I used to be in your ward before I moved over here, to avoid such problems. So, Mayor, if I will, my, the reason for coming here is that all the things that were listed for the assessment did not exist within my own property. I own the property. My concern is not about Steve's. His is different. I own mine. I don't have the gutters, the sidewalk, the pavement, and the streetlights. When I came here last time, I brought the pictorial representation of my property, to show that none of those things exist. Even the city does not clean my streets. The sweepers does not come on my sidewalk. So for them to levy me over $14,000 for something that I don't have, is beyond reason. And last time we were here, we all agreed that we should have a hearing, to that effect, and nobody sent us any information with reference to that. The reason why most of these people, I mean, 75 people were assessed, most of these people are over 70 years of age, within my community area. You don't expect disabled senior citizens on fixed income to be coming here every day, trying to dispute the validity of an assessment, when it should have been done differently. If there is some kind of a hearing where all these, you know, senior citizens can come together, and for the record, you guys received over 20 something, 20 something or 30 something dispute letters and complaints. And to come here again, you know, asking the city to overrule, you know, what was discussed previously, seems to be, in my own opinion, a reckless disregard to community concern. And that is not proper. It's almost, it's almost dictatorial. In a civilized society, that should not be the case. So to second his motion is, is if, Mayor, please, if you will, let's have some kind of a hearing before the city act on this, that way all the people that are within the community can come together, and be able to discuss the best way to follow, instead of just overruling their concern. I know mine, even the record shows that nothing was recorded on my property before I bought it, over, close to 16 or 18 months ago. And there was no disclosures before I bought it. So I cannot be legally held responsible for something that I did not authorize. The two senior citizens that were here last time indicated that they were the one who signed for whatever that they signed, prior to the demarcation of the land, before my property was constructed on top of the land. So I did not authorize that. They did not disclose anything when I bought my property. And I, none of these things existed in my property. So there should no be, there shouldn't be a legal reason for me to be held accountable for this, because it's practically, practically trying to let me pay for something that I have no use for. The whole street of Elkhorn and Jones, if you take it all the way to the mountain, people pass through those roads every day, taking their kids to school, going to Vons or Smith's, and going to walk. to Vons or Smith's, and going to work. And if the immediate residence has to be levied, those people also need to be accountable for that. It's like I have my office in Howard Hughes Parkway. It's like me paying for neon lights that I have to take on the strip to go to my office and go back home. You cannot, I mean, it's not reasonable to charge me for that. So if those, if I have to be charged for this, they should also be responsible for those, because they pass through those roads every day. So if the mayor will, please reconsider voting on this today, and let's have some kind of hearing so that all these seniors can be able to come in a place that will be more conducive for them, for us to be able to discuss this. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you state your name again for the record?
My name is Godson, G-O-D-S-O-N, and my last name is E-R-U-C-H-A-L-U.
Pronounce that.
Eruchalu. I used to be a corrections officer for the city way back many of a decade ago. So I used to come here.
Okay. Well, good. Thank you for being here. Let me ask our Public Works Director this question. Is there anything legally that is going to damage the city in any way, shape, or form if we do actually, I request to the mayor that we actually hold a hearing in two weeks, notice it appropriately, and at least let the residents have their peace? Because I understand his concerns, and I could rebut that easily, because you're right, we all take advantage of the nice streets of Jones and Elkhorn now. You just happen to be the property owner that's adjacent to it. In regards to disclosures, we have no control over that. We can't tell, you know, the laws are the law, and if, you know, certain people don't follow them, there's not much we can do in regards to that. So I understand all that.
It's not even on the record that such assessment exists for a potential new home buyer.
What I want to do, though, is allow the residents to actually have that hearing. We'll rehash this all over again. And I'm not sure, gentlemen, anything's going to be different. I don't know if anything is going to change in respects to having a hearing. But I want to allow you to be heard. I want to allow the Public Works Department to respond. So Jorge, answer my question. If we, can we have a full hearing, post it as a hearing in two weeks, or do we need longer, or is that going to harm us?
Councilman, the hearing to create the district occurred in two thousand and eight. That's done. That action's been taken.
Okay, let me repeat that. The hearing that created the district...
The hearing to create the district happened in May in two thousand and eight.
Okay.
So that's done. We can't, this hearing that we had December seventh was just to finalize the final role of the assessment, saying these are the property owners, these are the assessed values, to finalize that. We can certainly have that hearing all over, but we got to start back from step one again, based on NRS regulations. We got to start from the very first process of the public hearing to do the final role assessments, which means we got to have twenty-day notification in advance of a public hearing. We got to go through the public hearing process and this process all over again. So it can be done, but it's going to get us back to where we are today.
I see that.
To address this gentleman's concern in particular, his property is the one that's on a private cul-de-sac. There's four properties on a private cul-de-sac. He is correct, there was no improvements done in front of his house, because that's a private street. What he is being assessed for are the improvements that were done on the public side of Jones, which is the four parcels. And those improvements were divided equally amongst the four properties. And so that's what it's being assessed. He's correct, there's nothing in front of his property as what was done on the public street on Jones and divided between the four private parcels.
Would that be in a title search?
That should have been a title search.
In his title search. So if he had a title search now, because you were not the owner until sixteen, eighteen months ago, it would have been reflected in that, that he is, in fact, even though he's not adjacent to, would be responsible for whatever.
There's an intent to lean that is recorded with the assessor when the district is created. So his title company should have picked that up in their title search.
With, that's, Mayor, if I may, that's a good question. Title insurance, something that he can pursue through his title company in regards to the fact that that wasn't disclosed? I mean, gentlemen, understand, we still need to pay for this. We still need to make, we still need to pay for it. And I, there are, there may be issues with other property owners, too, that are having problems with titles and paperwork, goodness sakes. But I want you both to understand, even if we do have this public hearing process, we're still going to be here at the end of the day. The dollar amount is the dollar amount, and it's got to be recouped to the city of Las Vegas by the adjacent property owners. That's how special improvement districts are. I don't know what an additional hearing is going to do, and I think there's a little confusion there. Mr. Servante said that the original hearing was in two thousand and eight. The last hearing in December was to, what was it? What do you call it, Jorge?
It was to confirm the final assessment role, to say these are the properties...
That's the hearing, final assessment role. The map is on, is on the table there, on the overhead. That's the final assessment role. That's what that hearing was for. It wasn't a hearing whether, to discuss whether you're going to pay this or not. It's going to get paid.
Yes, it's going to get paid. I mean, the city needs the money. There's no question about that. But the problem is that what we discussed last time when we were here was that we would have some kind of hearing within the community, and the mayor authorized that. And we are looking forward to that. And to have the community deny that opportunity, to be able to evaluate the circumstances that resulted to this assessment will be unjust. That is why I second his motion for the, if the council may, for them to, for these to be adjourned until that hearing can be held within the community, either with the public works or community among themselves. Because we are waiting for some kind of input from them to let us know when we can have some kind of hearing as a closure for this. It's not that the city wouldn't get their money. They will get their money, either from a few people or from majority of the people. Somehow, it has to be paid. And it's responsible, citizens are to have those paid so that the city's action can keep going on. But it has to be paid fairly, and it has to be assessed fairly also.
Councilman?
Jorge, if we have another hearing, what, what hap, you have the hearing, then what happens? Give me the timeline on what's going to happen there.
Because we got to meet NRS stipulations of notification, the earliest we could have probably be the March meeting. We'd have to, we'd have to start with a resolution fixing the time and place for a public hearing. That's the first counseling that would come. Then you all would set that time and date of that public hearing. The next item, it had to be read twice? And then we got to leave two meetings of time for folks to come. We have a public hearing similar to the one we had December seventh. We would still provide the same information. The assessments are still the same. And then we'd have another, not a public hearing, but just a item to adopt the resolution to finalize the assessment, which is what we're doing today. So...
How long is that going to...
The total process, about sixty days? About sixty days.
And just so we're clear, did you all follow NRS norm, the statutes, all the normal processes to get this SID and notifications, and this is the last thing that needs to occur, correct? And if, if anybody, and so the assessments are correct, the people that have been assessed are correct, and if there are any, any legal issues with that, then they have to go to their title company or go to court, things like that, not against us, but against other, other people, correct?
That's correct, Councilman. We did follow the process based on the steps, but we actually afforded more time than the law requires.
Okay. And you have two specific issues here that are sort of off the page. One definitely where there's a question of ownership of the property. And Mr. Godson, because I'm sorry to call you by your first name, but mister, respectfully, his issue is there's probably something in the title that he hasn't seen. And to echo my colleague up here, there is title search insurance or title insurance. So they're both questions. I mean, this all starred in two thousand and eight. You were not the owner of the property.
No, you're not.
And so you have taken the property in, oh, eighteen months ago, or whatever. So that was already agreed to and should be in that title search. Definitely should be there. There's no question.
They provided two searches subsequent to that period, but still, not in...
Well, then there's something wrong with the title company. And in your situation, you know what the situation is. So that needs to be explored. I mean, these are very unusual situations. And from what I'm hearing, you will end up exactly in the same place as where you were at the December meeting, correct?
That's correct. Mayor, just for some clarification, the only thing that could change, the dollar amount is the dollar amount of what it costs to build a project. That can't change. The only thing that can change, if we were to start the process over again, is how you assess each individual property, but it still has to equate to the same dollar amount at the end of the day. You also, part of the law requires that we can't assess, if you decide, well, this gentleman shouldn't be assessed thirteen thousand, he shouldn't be assessed five thousand, that difference, we're going to assess to that of a property, somebody else's property. The value of that property still has to be greater than the new assessment given to that property. And as gentlemen have said, there's been changes in value of property over the years. You may not be able to get there in trying to redo in the shuffle again, because property values have changed from when the assessment was created.
Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I just wanted to ask this question about, these are county records, and you went to the county records before you gave the assessments, because you needed to know who owned the land, right?
That's correct.
The county records show that the first gentleman did not own the land then, and he does not own the land now, right?
That is what the assessment records show. It still shows Mr. and Mrs. Cobb as being the property owners.
Well, wouldn't it be who you, sir, to go to the county and ask them why they have this land in someone else's name? What the mix-up is, it seems that the mix-up is been caused by something or someone other than city-related. You followed every step of the way. We're trying to do it. The councilman's trying to do it every step of the way, the right way we should go. The mistake seems to lie either in the title search for one gentleman or in the county not having you as the owner of the land. I mean, if I were you, I'd be really sort of upset if they didn't have me owning land that I, I'm assuming you paid for it, right? So I think you should, my advice is if you don't go to a lawyer, at least go to the county office and find out, where did this happen? When the change was made, what you can show, you own the land and have them change it. Have you been to the county?
That's why we originally hired a lawyer, and he was able to come up with nothing other than to start the process over again, which was, to me, unacceptable at the time. I understand your questions, and we would begin to work from that angle. But I understand what the city's position is as well, that you still have to pay that amount. One of our main concerns is how did we limit that assessment to just seventy-two property owners?
Oh, that's something different.
And that's what's going to make the difference. I think that more benefit, as it's described in the, in the SID and the information given to us, more benefit from this than seventy-two. And that far-reaching benefit even extended to Mr. Goodson here is a little bit vague, how you, how those things were determined. Why weren't the people east of Jones determined? They say this SID began in two oh eight. Those homes were, and they said in two oh eight, the, the assessment was rolled into the value of their homes, and they paid for it when they purchased the property. Yet these homes were built in two thousand and two, two thousand and five. How do you, how do you get something that's built so early assessed when they say the SID wasn't created till two thousand and eight? See, those are questions that I don't understand. And, and the very fact that mine was doubled, okay, maybe there was a process. Maybe I overlooked something. But still, there's questions. And the reason we hadn't moved on it from December seventh till now is like Mr. Goodson said, we were waiting for the city to respond to us, to set the hearing date, and then we could get together, and as a combined group, we could have one voice speaking for us, even as recommended, perhaps hire an attorney to speak for us before the city council.
I see, I see what you're saying. And to tell you the truth, as I recall that meeting, I thought we were going to have another meeting. I thought, but I don't know if we voted that way, if it was just a suggestion.
Okay. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm trying not to beat this to death here. I, I know that the assessment was based on higher property values at the time. But correct me if I'm wrong, the construction costs would have dropped, wouldn't they, below what had been predicted at the time of the assessment? So even though the house values had dropped, the cost of the construction was probably less. Would I be wrong in saying that?
That is not quite correct, Councilman. The construction costs that came in, the bids that came in, were very close to the engineer's estimate that was created at that time. Back in two thousand and eight, when the project went out to construction, there was an engineer's estimate on the improvements. The bid that came in was very, very close to the engineer's estimate. So the cost didn't shift significantly.
Okay, I did not realize construction was so close to the estimate date. Then I have to ask this. Are there any other SIDs that are out there that are in limbo here, like we don't know about, that may have been based upon an assessment on residences or buildings at an earlier date, an earlier price, but are still under construction?
Coffin, just for some clarification...
Yeah, you sent us a list, but I'm not sure that how many of these are actually under construction now.
Yeah, just for clarification, when we do the original estimate, we compare the cost of the improvement to the assessed value of property at that time. When we come before you for that December seventh meeting, we do the same thing. We review the cost of the improvement being assessed to the current value of the property. And the amount being assessed is still less than the current depressed value of the property. And so those are checks that the law requires us to make as part of the process. And so the, even though some of the prices come down on these properties, the cost of the improvements are still less than the current assessed value of those properties.
Yes. Now then, only seventy-two people were noticed and were aware of this project, although there might have been discussions around the neighborhoods. That, would that mean, then, that the other people, should there be an expansion, should there be an attempt to expand those who might be benefiting? That would fail, wouldn't it, because they weren't part of the process?
The seventy-two, and I think it was seventy-six, the seventy-two properties that were noticed were those that were being assessed. The ones on the east side that the gentleman referred to weren't noticed and weren't assessed, because they built their improvements. When they built their homes, they built their half of the street, and so they already paid for their improvements. And for many years, the folks that lived on the west side enjoyed the benefit of the improvements those folks paid to get to their house. And so now we only assess the folks that had to build their half of the road. The other half was already built and paid for by those homes that were on the east side. That's why they weren't assessed, because they already paid for their improvements.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for your help in this discussion. I am, I want you to be clear, gentlemen. I'm just trying to do the right thing here. By letting you be heard, by having some kind of a hearing, by, by, by just making sure that this is as transparent as possible, from the Public Works Director to our city attorney to our city manager, the city's done everything it was supposed to do, everything. Your issues that you're dealing with now in regards to the assessments, I think are going to have to be personal, that you're going to have to get an attorney and go a different direction with. But I think the city has done everything per the state law that they were supposed to. And I think if we do set another hearing date, and you go through the sixty, I think it's going to be ninety days where you get, get through it, you go through this whole process, we're going to be right here again, having the same discussion. Who got the notices? Who got assessed? Why they got assessed? Why you got assessed? Why you're not, why you're paying taxes on a property that, right now, we don't think you own? I mean, this is, this is ugly. And I don't know exactly what direction to go, except to protect the city and to help to protect you as well. I mean, it's a delicate balance here. I'm going to, Your Honor, I'm going to make a motion to, and I think that, I'm going to make this motion and have you guys understand this. We need some kind of closure so you guys can move forward. And I think the best thing to do is to follow staff's recommendation and approve this agenda item, and get that closure on, should it be approved by the council. And then you guys take the necessary steps legally, whether it's towards somebody else personally or privately, or whether it's towards the city of Las Vegas, you have to make that decision. But I think we need some closure so you guys can move forward on this. That's my motion, Mayor.
Any other discussion, comments? There's a motion, please vote.
Just one thing, I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilman Wilson?
Councilman Ross, I respect your motion. The only slight issue I have is that I think we gave these gentlemen the impression, from the last time we were here, that we were going to contact them and give them a chance to come in in a meaningful way. And that didn't happen. We evidently sent the letter out a few days ago, and you got it late and all that. But the reason I'm going to support your motion, Councilman Ross, is that I don't think things would change. I think that if you came in and you pled your case either privately to our Public Works folks, or to Councilman Ross, or to us, I don't think the facts are going to change. But I do question why we didn't give them a little bit more notice and maybe a chance to come in and plead their case to us in briefings versus, you know, with two days' notice in a public hearing.
I would like to add that in support of this, both of your issues are really strong issues that really need the advice of attorney. There's no question, certainly, on your, your question, Mr. Burke, Mr. Godson, it is on the title. That should have passed and been clear on that title, and you should have known about it. So I think the city council has heard your issues, and they are valid. But again, you don't know if you own the property. You need to find that out, and therefore, the recommendation. And while our city council cannot give you, quote, "advice," you certainly, would you be good enough, Mr. Jirby, if they, to step outside and just to give them a general viewpoint of your assessment on both of those without giving them advice? Or can you do it right from there?
What I'd prefer to do is say this. I understand one of the gentlemen already has an attorney. I think he indicated that at the podium. Is that correct, sir, that you, on the parcel that you believe was subdivided, you've already contacted?
Mr. Burdick.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Burdick.
We are no longer using that attorney, because he, we were using him at the time that we were going to subdivide and build.
Okay.
And since, I think it's oh eight or oh nine, when property values started to decline, we withdrew from that.
Here's what I can do, because I'll be in the meeting, Your Honor. As recommended, if they want to go up to the ninth floor of City Hall, we'll provide them with a phone number, which is the only ethical thing I can do for lawyer referral. Lawyer referral will give them lawyers that specify, that practice in specific areas of law, including this area of land use. And that's about the best the city can do.
And for Mr. Godson, whose last name I can... And for Mr. Godson, whose last name I cannot pronounce sadly, also the same number for him to pursue the title search process.
Exactly. If you want to go to the ninth floor of City Hall and tell them that the city attorney set you up to get the number for lawyer referral, we'll be glad to provide that to you, and they will take it from there. They'll be glad to provide you with several people that practice in this area.
That should be fine. But if I, if I may, what, when we go back to the community, and we have to approach these senior citizens to tell them what happened in the City Hall today, about how disappointed they will be to know that the city made some promises about getting together for a hearing and only to be able to really get to, on those promises, what do we go back there and tell them? And what kind of impression will it make for the city to say something and go back on their words? It's not about the money, the city will get their money, but it's about doing something that is right. And these folks are people that don't fix income, some of them are disabled, they don't move around. I mean, you wouldn't allow about 20 wheelchairs coming inside the City Hall just for this type of meetings. Out of respect for the city, I still think that it would be some, it would be the right thing to do to give them at least a voice, given the fact that they all had written comments and complaints over a battery of them, which is on the record of the public, Department of Public Works. So even if it wouldn't make any difference, sometimes somebody sitting back there watching the TV all day, knowing that at least she was heard for a reason, will make all the difference in this life. So if it's not going to be of inconvenience for the city, I still recommend that maybe they will be given some chance to be heard, at least, for whatever that is worth.
If I could just say, for the record, the, there has been a hearing to hear objections, and the city staff has followed state law, and as odd as it may sound, to do more or to do less always gets us in trouble. And no matter what we do, there's always going to be someone who either recently bought a piece of property, or bought it without a proper title search, or something that comes up. That's why we have hearings like this, to hear those objections and dispose of them for the last time. The, the only thing I can say, sir, is that to start the process over and go back to the very first hearing raises more complications than it will solve. It'll, it'll certainly be fair for people to be heard, but it would be very unfair if, at the end of the day, there turned out not to be enough value to support this assessment the taxpayer had to pay for. It would certainly be unfair at the end of the day if this were issued, I don't know if this is a bonded SID or not, but if so, interest is going to accrue during that 60, 60-day period, so the assessments are going to go up a little bit for everybody if this thing is held for 60 days, and that's not fair either. And so I would just, having put that on the record, say that we'll try and learn from whatever went wrong this time, try and do it better the next time, but recommend that we stick with the processes in place right now, and ask that you call for the vote.
Okay, there, there is a motion on the floor, please vote. Please post. Please go to the ninth floor, gentlemen, and get that name. Item number 45, we are in Economic Urban Development, report for possible action regarding development projects currently under contract or negotiation, other projects, and to provide an overview of program and initiatives, all wards. Mr. Arnt.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Bill Arnt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. In the interest of time, I'm not going to give a formal presentation, but I just wanted to give some brief highlights.
Bill, why don't we just, can we just hold, I would make a recommendation that we hold this item to the next meeting, if that's okay with the mayor and council. And then we can weave in the things that Councilman Barlow asked for earlier on in the agenda today, and give us a little time, because we've still got some matters to deal with in the morning session and in about 40 minutes.
So we'll obey this to the next meeting, the 15th? And would that be items 46, 52, and 53?
No, just this report.
Just this item, item 45.
Yes, thank you.
Does someone want to make a motion to that effect, please?
I think Andrew Donner just swallowed his.
Necktie?
Okay, I'll make a motion to obey item number 45 to the next, February 15th meeting.
February 15th. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Thank you, Mr. Arnt and City Manager, motion passes.
I'd like to vote.
Okay. Mr. Coffin's just come back and is voting. Okay, so, moving along, sorry.
Just, thank you, Your Honor. Please put it on the record that I am in favor of that. Item 45, thank you.
Okay, so now we are on council items 46, 52, and 53. 46, discussion for possible action regarding amended, amended and restated disposition and development agreement with City Hall LLC as successor to RGG LLC for the sale of land improvements of 400 Stewart Avenue and 221 North Las Vegas Boulevard totaling 7.75 acres and purchase option for vacant parcels northeast of Las Vegas Boulevard and Stewart Ave, Avenue totaling approximately 6.88 acres to City Hall Option LLC and Zappos Inc., APNs 13934501003 and 019-02051201 and 004005008009 to 015018 to 02503423039048050 to 0530052056009 and 100 revenue $18 million. Number 52, our 6-2012, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution finding that the proposed sale of Las Vegas City Hall campus located 400 Stewart Avenue, APN 13934501003 and 221 North Las Vegas Boulevard, APN 13934501-020 as outlined in the disposition development agreement between the City of Las Vegas and City Hall LLC is for the purpose of economic development and is in the best interest of the public. Item number 53, our 7-2012, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution finding that the proposed sale of 35 City of Las Vegas-owned parcels to the City Hall Option LLC and/or zappos.com, comma, Inc., in conjunction with the sale of City Hall Campus located at 400 Stewart Avenue to City Hall LLC is for the purpose of economic development and is in the best interest of the public. All three items are in Ward 3, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Mr. Arnt?
Thank you, Mayor. With me today is Andrew Donner with Resort Gaming Group. In opening remarks, I could simply say, everything is in order, because it is in order, but in the interest of transparency, I'm going to go through very quickly what has changed in the transaction and the final documents, and there's some significant improvements for the city, so I think it's important for the public and for you to disclose those to the public.
Please proceed.
Today, I'm just going to recap the project, explain what you previously approved in June, our revisions to our business terms, again, how it helps the city, particularly our risk profile, talk about the importance of a corporate guarantee that we have from Amazon, and then reiterate the fiscal and economic impact which you saw in June, but because you have to vote for selling these two properties in compliance with the resolutions approving sale below the higher of two appraised values, we want to talk about that today. And then finally summarize the actions you're taking today. I'm not going to read this slide, but the importance of this is really, it is a economic development project. We are keeping a company that first moved here in 2004 with 70 employees, they've grown to 1,200, and they're still growing. Las Vegas Business Press recently, in their annual book of lists, reported that they, Zappos is the 13th largest employer in the region, the largest, 13th largest private employer. That's their survey, and we expect them to keep moving up notches on that list, so it's really important that we keep this business and enable them to grow in our community. And of course, our partner is Resort Gaming Group, and we're looking at a campus, not only this site, but combined with the acreage across the street, has the potential for an 18-acre campus. This is the site, you saw this again in June, the red is what we're selling under development agreement, and then the parcels in blue are under a purchase option agreement. The business terms that currently sit today, and I say current because it's current before consideration of this item, what you approved in June was a sale price of $18 million, where the, the majority of it, $15 million of that sale price is seller financing, we're taking back a mortgage. And this is pretty common in the economic development industry and done in a lot of transactions. We required lease with Zappos to be at least 10 years. The intention at the time was that Resort Gaming Group was going to be responsible for the build-out. It's an expensive build-out. It's a 40-year-old building, and because of that, we anticipated at a minimum that there needed to be $18 million in a construction loan or development loan to help with that build-out. And we mitigated risk of taking a position with a mortgage position by requiring that the senior loan, meaning that $18 million loan, be paid off during a 10-year or 15-year lease term. And again, we had a corporate guarantee from, from Amazon. So what's changed? All the financial terms, I'm happy to report, have stayed the same. The lease term, in June, we said it had to be a minimum of a 10-year lease, and I'm happy to report and congratulate our partner that we've achieved a 15-year lease with three, five-year extension options. Another significant change, and this is analogous to what we did with City Hall, when we worked with Far City, we wanted to get the lowest cost possible for the end project. And we did that because we used the city's financing to help build the building, our credit was cheaper than the private marketplace. And we have a great company and corporate partner in Zappos, together with amazon.com, which has great credit. So because of that, because of their interest in being directly involved with the renovations, Zappos agreed to fund with cash the anticipated renovations and all the tenant improvement costs. There are still some responsibilities that Resort Gaming Group has to renovate the building, including environmental work, but the majority of the renovations are going to be directly funded by Zappos with a cash contribution. Because of that, we've agreed to reduce the ceiling on that senior loan that was approved in June from $18 million to $7.5 million, which has greatly reduced our risk. The other significant change is that we try to keep things simple, and the most important thing is to keep Zappos, again, in the community, they're growing, and to enable them to move to downtown. So in doing that, we decided to bifurcate the deal. Essentially, what was a contingency for Zappos moving forward, the option parcels, that has been removed, and it's no longer a contingency, so they're essentially two separate transactions. There's a purchase and development agreement for this campus, which includes the City Hall and the two garages, and then there's a purchase option where the developer, Resort Gaming, has the option, but not the obligation, to purchase those parcels and that land for future development, both for the corporate campus as well as for residual development. Also, the option, we've made a slight modification where Zappos wanted some direct rights to purchase the option, that was contemplated in the original agreement, but we've made that a little bit clearer in the final agreement. So what does this mean? The risk profile, essentially, it stayed the same or improved, and two points have improved in particular, development risk. Development risk, when we're doing a public-private project, we never want the city to carry that development risk. We always want the private sector to do that. We did that with City Hall. Far City bore the risk of delivering the project on schedule and on time. They bore that development risk for us. And our partner, Resort Gaming, agreed to do that, but it's really even improved further to where Zappos has now taken a significant amount of that responsibility themselves by funding cash, the renovations that are needed for the building. And so because of that, we think it's greatly improved the risk to the city overall. Second, the repayment risk, which is a concern, are we going to get repaid that $15 million loan, the seller financing? We covered that risk in the prior agreements, but that has even improved by reducing that senior loan amount. And then finally, our lien position, at the end of that first term of the lease is the same, the senior loan is paid off, we're in a first lien position, and if something were to happen, we'd be in a first lien position to get the, the asset back. So overall, the risk has improved. This is a little bit of a complex slide, but it's really meant to show what risk is the city, if any, taking over time. On the front end, like every public-private transaction, there is some risk. I can't say, as your Economic Development Director, there's zero risk. I can't say that for any transaction. It, it is what it is, we're a public-private partnership. But we've structured it so that there's very minimal risk. Falling close of Esco, which we expect in April, there'll be minimal risk borne by all parties. Once construction gets going and then it's finished, and you see the schedule there, summer to 12, fall to, to fall 13, and there's, in our contract, an 18-month window there for it to be completely done, all the risk essentially shifts, not all the risk, but a majority of the risk shifts substantially to, to Zappos, so that, again, they're taking on that development risk, which we think is good for the city. And then following that, in fall or of 2013, rent would commence, and then financial risk shifts really to Zappos and Amazon, and would be so for the remainder of the lease term. And then you see there at the end of that initial lease term, although there are three, five-year extensions, if it were to end and Zappos were to not continue there, the risk really is eliminated because we're in a first lien position. So what does all this mean from a risk, and why is the revenue structure and the deal structure a good thing for the city? We have a corporate guarantee from an incredibly strong financial company. Amazon, this is, just pulled off the Wall Street Journal, a recent report, their recent market cap, and it changes day-to-day, of course, but a recent market cap was $86 billion, maybe more significantly, as far as the value of our guarantee, in their financial statements, which they reported at the end of quarter three of 2011, and those financial statements are public, they reported approximately $2.8 billion in cash and $0 in debt. I would argue that I'd probably want a corporate guarantee from Amazon than just about any company that we could contemplate doing business with. So that guarantee effectively ensures that we're going to give it, that there would be rent coming in to pay the lease, and then with the lease backed by the guarantee, that's really ensuring that the rent will be paid throughout the term of the lease, and it's even covered in the event of extreme circumstances such as building casualty, which is unusual, but it's, it's an extremely strong deal to the benefit of the city and our, our development partner, Resort Gaming, who's serving as landlord. In the event of the default, we can foreclose and assume Resort Gaming Group's rights under the guarantee, there is a, a legal process to do that, and if you have questions about how that works, I'll defer to our counsel, Nick Niarcos, and our city attorney team who helped negotiate the transaction. Fiscal impact, this hasn't changed either, should look familiar. There's a revenue impact over time, the 30-year life of the deal, that we're anticipating $61 million of revenue gross, or if you net present value that to today's dollars at a 5% discount rate, that'd be over $32 million. Again, a tremendous impact. Maybe more importantly is the economic impact, and what stimulus this will be for downtown. For every 1,000 employees, we estimated that the economic output for the Zappos project would generate over $273 million in, in value, and that's just for the 1,000 employees. We have a study that was done by RCG Consulting, and they determined that for the full 1,200 employees, it would actually be a $336 million total output. Employment, when you include the indirect and induced, the supply chain opportunities and the employment that results from those employees spending money in the community, you're looking at an employment impact just from today of 2,100 employees. And again, they're growing from the 1,200, expected to grow to potentially 2,000 employees upon move-in. So finally, what are the overall benefits? Again, this is a business development and economic development transaction, we're keeping a large, successful company in the community and helping them grow, which is tremendously important. That's what we do in economic development. The company is making a 15-year commitment, and this is kind of unusual in the economic development field. Typically, what you see is a five-year commitment, that a city or a state doing economic development will say at a minimum, we want a five-year commitment. And in fact, even our state tax incentives, the way they're currently structured, require just a five-year commitment. By the structure of this deal, we're getting a 15-year commitment and then potentially a 30-year commitment from the, the company, which is just incredible. The sale proceeds and the tax revenue are helped to offset the costs of the new City Hall, which is something we presented to you in the overall global transaction. Mr. Shea, the CEO of Zappos, has stated publicly his intent to invest $350 million in downtown, and I can't underscore this enough, and I, Mr. Shea's in the audience, but to have a business champion like this in the community is invaluable. We're nothing without our private partners, and we're ecstatic to have the partner that we do in Mr. Shea. And then finally, that the corporate headquarters presence of Zappos is going to help catalyze And then finally, the corporate headquarters presence of Zappos is going to help catalyze, be a catalyst for additional private investment and corporate locations. So in conclusion, you approved items 24 and 25 on consent, which were just for easements. But items 46, 52, and 53 are needed for the transaction. 46 is what I just went over. 52 is to sell the city hall campus below the higher of two appraised values. We had two appraisals. One came in at $22.2 million. The other one, the second one, came in at $25.7 million. And where our sale price is $18 million, and then we also have the seller financing as an additional incentive. So we do have to meet the requirements of the law where we're selling below market value, and we're doing that for the economic development exemption. So that is item 52. And then finally, item 53, the purchase option. Again, the economics have stayed the same. The developers agree to pay 85% of market value based on appraisals. It's not 100% of market value, so we have to cite an economic development exemption. But we do have an escalator in that purchase option, so if the developer does not move forward quickly and purchase the property immediately, that value over time will start to approach market value. Finally, I just wanted to thank our entire city team that worked on this transaction. Our city manager, Betsy Fretwell, was invaluable. Our city attorney's office, Brad Jurbik, Terry Ponticello, Nick Niarkos, our special counsel, my team, including Shawnee Coleman and Romeo Betty. And then finally, maybe an unsung hero with this transaction, our city surveyor, Alan Ricky, has been working tirelessly, day and night, to make sure all the easements and all the title work would be in a presentable fashion for both our purchaser and our end-user company. It is a 40-year-old building, and that was a tremendous amount of work in a short period of time. And so I can't thank Alan enough, who does such a wonderful job for the city. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Donner. And maybe after Mr. Donner's presentation, if there are questions, we can take questions. Also with us today is Mr. Nielsen with Zappos. So if you have any questions of Zappos, Mr. Nielsen would be glad to answer those as well.
Thank you. I mean, how exciting. Mr. Donner, welcome, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. You know, in a way, I wish this was a courtroom, and I wish I was a lawyer, because I would probably say, "Rest my case."
Okay. But would you please state your name and your title, please?
Yes, Andrew Donner, founder of Resort Gaming Group. You know, today brings to fruition a deal that on its own represents a significant investment and economic uplift into downtown. But given the nature of the partnership and the embrace of downtown by Tony Shea, Fred Mosler, the company Zappos, the company Downtown Project Team, it represents much more than just a deal. Today represents the future of our city and sets the stage for a broad-based transformation that will not only make downtown a more vibrant business center, it will make downtown a better place to live, work, play, for both Southern Nevadans as well as tourists. Having been downtown as an owner and operator, I've been here for many years, and I've experienced firsthand the doubt and the pundits and the critics who question the feasibility of making downtown desirable again. This transaction was no exception. We too have had our share of doubters. In realizing the vision of this deal, it would be impossible to articulate the sacrifices and the efforts of so many, and the faith which needed to be exercised to overcome what you may have seen the insurmountable. But in all human affairs, there are efforts, and there are results. And the strength of the effort is the measure of the result. And today before you are the following results. We deliver you a DDA amendment that has no economic changes, that reduces the risk to the city of Las Vegas. We deliver to you a lease executed between the parties for a longer term than was anticipated. We deliver to you an executed guarantee from one of the most respected companies in the world, amazon.com. But most importantly, we clear the path and create the runway for a successful landing by Zappos into downtown Las Vegas. A company that has created one of the most successful and progressive business cultures of our time. A company that invests in its people and its community. A company for the 21st century that embodies true leadership through cultivation and the creative class. A company that is a true difference-maker for downtown Las Vegas. As Bill mentioned, so many people contributed to this transaction. And I would be remiss not to name a few. First and foremost, Mayor, your husband. It was Oscar who convinced me to come downtown, and it was Oscar who believed in me when I told him that today could happen. So I'm forever grateful for his trust. Mayor, to you, members of the city council, for your can-do attitude in helping project this transaction to move forward. I know that the composition of this council will never be the same, but all of you will look back and remember that you've all been a part of history. Bill, I don't think anyone needs to really think about the quality of the work that you do. Your presentation speaks for itself, and I appreciate all the effort in you being in the trenches all the way through the transaction. Certainly to your team and to Shawnee and everybody, you guys have been terrific. To our city manager, Betsy Fretwell, her passion for the city, her integrity, her ability to manage, she's the best city manager I've ever seen. You know, this transaction had an army of over 30 people that worked tirelessly for a year. And often, we were asked, what is taking so long? Is a lease going to be signed? Is this transaction going to happen? Councilman Wolfson, you're a jurist doctor. In that 30 people, there were over 10 lawyers that we had to manage for over a year. I know. There is my explanation on what took so long. Special mention to the city attorneys, Nick Niarkos and Terry Ponticello, Brad Jurbik. You guys have been terrific. Certainly our counsel, Jeff Hines and Winnie Fields, Millie Chow at Zappos. To Zach Ware and the Zappos and Downtown Project teams, who are committed to making downtown a great place, who have already adopted that this is their home that they want to be at. To my friends, Tony Shea and Fred Mosler, pretty amazing what a short walk can turn into. I get the privilege to stand before you and be the face of the company. But there is no "I" in team, and the reality is that it was a true partnership that got us here today. To my partners, Todd Kessler, Tom Spiegel, who sacrificed so much to ensure a successful result. And often, we take out and bear the biggest burdens on those that we care about the most. So to my family and my wife for allowing me to pursue my passion and being a part of the revitalization of downtown. And last but not least, this transaction does have what I'd call an MVP, really a standout person. And I think it's important for this city, and specifically, Mayor, for you and this council, to understand really who this person is. And that person is Chris Nielsen. Chris is the chief operating officer and the chief financial officer of Zappos. We had some very tough days, but Chris woke up every day and went back to the table with a commitment to try again. While continuing to lead his company through great growth and manage adversity, he led this transaction for Zappos. He navigated it through the halls of Amazon, which is no small feat. He balanced fairness. He looked out for the interests of his own company while remaining sensitive to the needs of this city. I appreciate his integrity, his dedication, and his commitment to the transaction. Downtown is a walkable city, whose neighborhoods and amenities exude personality, charm, diversity, culture, art, fun. And while progress on downtown redevelopment has made great strides in recent years, I truly believe that the next five years will prove for greater change than the last 15. Thank you.
It has been a long time. I listened to Oscar for the longest, longest months and years in pain. So I know what you went through. I know the pride he must feel, as must everybody who calls this home, calls Las Vegas home. Prior city council persons, mayor pro temaries, everybody I know is memorializing this moment. It is a great joint effort, and it's going to be a reflection of a future for our community that will be unequaled in this country. And I know it. I can't thank our city manager, Bill, the legal staff, all the people from our community that has worked so hard surveying, doing whatever they're doing, and certainly everyone in RGG and Zappos, Mr. Shea, Amazon. It's a miracle come true. And as I said, you don't come back to me without the lease. I don't want to talk about anything else. And it's just that this day has happened, and what, on a wonderful day, that it would be Steve Wolfson Day in Las Vegas for this also to be memorialized there. I'm sure our council persons would like to say something each, and we'll start off with the gentleman to my right, Mayor Brodeur.
Thanks, Mayor. Something struck me, Andrew. Has it been a year since we actually initially talked about this?
It's been over a year.
It's been over a year. I didn't realize it was that long. And what's interesting is, I mean, during this last year, there have been newspaper articles on this, on Zappos coming downtown, magazine articles, national television, Money Magazine, I think that's worth the $350 million, CNN. But I mean, that's all, people have been talking about this move downtown. And our staff and you, Bill, and I mean, you've gone over every single detail on this. I mean, you, I don't know how many hours you put into making sure that this was a good deal for both the city of Las Vegas and for RGG and Zappos. It was going to be a partnership. So there's been a lot of work put into this. But you know, when I go walking around the downtown area and I talk to businesses down there, even up in Ward 4, that's what they're talking about. They're saying, they're talking about Zappos coming downtown, but they keep asking this one question, when is this going to happen? You know, we're talking about it, but when is this going to happen? Well, I guess it's going to happen today, huh?
It's going to happen today, but it's going to take some time to turn this wonderful building into a building that is conducive to operate their company.
Well, as Larry, the cable guy, says, let's get her done.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Well, I would entertain a motion. Let's start out of order because of the advice we've been given by staff. Yes, sir. Would you come forward and state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Sam Zier. I'm a business owner at 508 Fremont in the entertainment district. I'm here for myself as well as a couple of other business owners in the general area, the entertainment district. Everything we heard from the gentleman, Mr. Donner, and the economic development is excellent. It's very difficult to say anything different and, of course, to be enthused of what they're going to do for the city. Except there is one issue and one problem that this body needs at least to look at. Because of purchasing the building, the city building, Zappos have made a commitment and Zappos executives, as well as their employees, to come downtown. They got involved in surveying and want to change the downtown district to the way they feel they need to see it become for them and for Las Vegas, of course. However, what that's creating is, and because of certain zoning that the city have implemented in these areas, some existing business owners that have been there for years, have been there for 20 years, one of the oldest merchants in the street, what's happening to them is they're being displaced by the new zoning, yes, and by the new taste of how Zappos, they want to see the area changed. Maybe to its benefit. However, this body should look into, because it's giving Zappos the benefit of the discounted value, discounted dollars, this body should at least insert something in there to protect somehow, protect or put a consideration for the existing businesses and their employees that are going to be displaced because of the change of the nature of the area, change of the business, and the change of the climate. Maybe a relocation-type arrangement or something like that. I really don't know exactly what should go in there, but a thought should be given. And the motion should include something to the extent that no displacement, unfair displacement would occur for the existing merchants that are in the area because of the move of Zappos. Somehow could be worded. I don't know how, but if any of you have a comment. I've sent a letter to Councilman Barlow yesterday, expressed that same opinion. Zappos, for a whole year, executives of Zappos, Mr. Shea, and other executives have been screening the area for a year, like you, all of you guys have been wondering what's going on. The business owners were hoping that Zappos would do the right thing, and that is, if a business is displaced, that they will fairly treat that business and the displacement. Or if they want to bring in their own businesses or businesses that they feel is going to benefit the area and benefit the community in general, which is fine. Nobody is against it. What we're saying is do it in a fair way and do not displace existing business owners or their employees.
Thank you for your comments. Do you want to make a statement there?
Mayor?
I would, if I may.
Sure, please.
Andrew, I'm there just for a moment. I did receive a fax from Mr. Zier and also from, I'm assuming, your attorney? Or I should say, an attorney by the name of Michael Bond, Law Offices of Michael Bond.
Yes, this is my attorney.
Is this your attorney?
Yes, but that was not an intended message to you. That was to Zappos.
Okay, well, it wasn't addressed to me. It was actually addressed to Tony Shea.
I don't know how you got it, but...
Well, it came in on the fax.
Councilman, and your honor.
And so...
I hate to interrupt you.
Excuse me one second, please, Councilman Barlow. Our council would like to make a statement, please.
I hate to interrupt, and I rarely have to do this, but I do feel that the discussion has kind of gotten so far afield, I need to now. Under the open meeting law, there are three items before you. Two items are resolutions that deal with the value of property, and one item is to deal with a development agreement. None of those three items directly deal with businesses on East Fremont Street or any of the things that this gentleman is talking about at the microphone. I can understand that there might be some collateral attachment between these two issues, but they are not before the council today. Under the open meeting law, you are limited to a debate on the issues that we have publicly agended, which are the three I just mentioned. And with that, I would...
I appreciate that, Brad. But what I would like to do anyway, being that he faxed it, I guess you only faxed it to me, and so being that he made mention of it on the record, I wanted to at least pass this to the city clerk so that it is on the record, being that the gentleman came forward. So I just wanted to let you know that I am in receipt of your fax, but I will also be presenting it to the city clerk for it to be filed accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you for commenting. However, though, commenting on the city's attorneys, there is an indirect...
Okay.
There is an indirect effect on what I'm speaking about.
I think you've made your statement, and we need to move on. Thank you very much.
Just to clarify, however, Mayor?
Yes, please, Councilwoman.
You know, these are very difficult things to understand. I've really tried hard, and I know others on the council have. Our staff is a very capable staff, and they've done some wonderful, wonderful work that's reached fruition to an extent perhaps we never even thought we'd be able to reach. However, it's difficult to understand all of these ramifications and all of the business acumen that's needed to go through this. And I just wanted to say, because of my faith in staff and because they are behind this and recommend this fully, I was ready to vote approval of this, even though I know I don't fully understand everything in it. I try to, but I know this is for minds that have the expertise of people on our staff, and they convey that to us. So trusting that I was going to vote approval. My only question now is, does what this gentleman talks about that's not related to this building but to other... to this building, but to other pieces of property on Fremont, have any effect from this vote today?
No.
Oh, okay. That could come up later if someone wanted to bring it up. But the vote today does not affect that. So if I move with my first feelings, because I do want to make sure that we don't displace people, and that we are fair with people, but that has nothing to do with this vote today.
None of your votes will affect any property on East Fremont Street.
Okay.
Whatever happens there, it will happen because the market says it's going to happen, and individual desire to invest in it, and forces beyond our control on these three issues.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, taking these out of order, starting with item number 52. Councilman Barlow, do you have a motion to make on item 52, please?
I have a motion and comment briefly. I too want to thank the entire Zappos team for looking at our downtown as an opportunity to not only invest, but to invest their culture in the downtown community, to make it a vibrant community for us all to enjoy in years to come. In addition to that, I want to thank you, Andrew, and your entire team for believing in the vision, and taking a chance as well, by expanding your business and growing additional businesses in the downtown community. Because in any state you land in, the downtown seems to be the Mecca of all activity, all culture, all movement, on all, on a variety of levels. And that's what I'm looking forward to, coming back to our downtown, specifically being a native, and having played in the downtown, and bowled in the downtown, and movies in the downtown, and a variety of restaurants, and ice cream shops. I'm looking forward to that day, coming back for future generations to enjoy the same way I enjoyed as a young person growing up here in the community. In addition to that, I do want to, of course, take my hat off to the entire city staff, the executive team, of course, Bill, you and your entire team, for a wonderful job. I agree with Councilwoman Tarkanian, this is a very complex, very fast-paced, moving contract and language that it was very difficult to keep up with. But trusting in the intelligence, and the professionalism, and the laws that were basically brought before us, as far as what we're voting on here today, I'm trusting that this is going to be something for the entire community to enjoy and to embrace as things move forward. As you all very well know, we are moving very quickly now, and swiftly, exiting this building to prepare for our grand opening, March 5. And the entire community is invited to come over to the grand opening and the ribbon cutting of the new city hall. But also, I'm very eager and excited to come back to see what in fact Zappos has to offer here in this building, once they open their doors here. And I'm pretty sure it's going to be just as special. And so, I'm looking forward to that as well. So with that being said, and Mr. Sam Zier, thank you so very much for sending the fax to my office. I am in receipt of it, as you see, I've forwarded to the city clerk. And I encourage you to continue to work with all parties involved. I'm not sure what the true basis of the issues are. That's beyond the scope of my boundary as a city representative at this point, from what I view in your letter. But I'm sure that things can be worked out when like minds are sitting at the table discussing how in fact to move, you know, your business forward, and making sure that other businesses are protected at the same time. So with that, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, subject to all conditions. Thank you, Mayor.
There's a motion. I'm so sorry, Councilman Coffin.
Oh.
I suppose I could still ask a question, even though the motion's on the table. That's fine. But what I need to make sure is, when you took these out of order, I had a little sequence in my mind on this. Is this the resolution which authorizes the sale below appraised value of the city hall?
Ms. Art, I think you can address that. I've been asked to take them by staff recommendation in this order.
Thank you, Mayor. The order that we need to hear the items is item 52, item 53, and then item 46. And the reason for that, Councilman, is before you approve the agreement to sell below fair appraised value, which would be essentially item 46, you have to approve the resolution making a finding that it's in compliance with the law. So that's the order. And the city attorney's office is here, if there's any clarification that's needed on why that's the order that needs to take place.
I think that that's accurate, but I just want to say 52 deals specifically with city hall, and the properties across the street, and 53 deals with the option parcels. Is that correct?
Correct. The city hall campus itself, I said city hall complex in the PowerPoint, is this building, this chambers even, both garages, the north garage, as well as the Stewart Avenue garage, as well as the KCLB TV studio. That's item 52. And then item 53 is the option parcels, which was shown in the map earlier in the PowerPoint, are the parcels east of Las Vegas Boulevard. So they're separate transactions and separate items to approve both of those.
And the only issue is, then, what is your opinion of the original appraisals? If I'm going to vote for a resolution which says that those appraisals were wrong, and I can understand how that happens, I want to make sure that we have the full faith of the city attorney's office and this department, that in fact those appraisals were high for what reason? I'm asking this question.
Let me just state on the record, and Brad may want to expand on this, I don't want it represented that I'm stating that those appraisals are wrong. There's a very specific process that we have to follow to comply with the law. And then the appraisals and the values, the appraisers follow appraisal standards, MAI standards, and there's standards that are set by the state, as I know you know. And so whatever the values come out at, they come out at. And then we're bound, if we sell below the higher of those two appraisals, which we're doing, we have to cite one of two exemptions, either an economic development exemption or redevelopment exemption. And because of everything we've talked about today, we're citing an economic development exemption. So we're not, we're not making an opinion for or against the appraisals and those values. They are what they are, and then we have to follow the process that's outlined in state law.
That's accurate. The resolutions don't in any way condemn the appraisals as being accurate or inaccurate. As Bill said, you have to start with a number. State law requires two independent appraisers. That's what we did. That's the number we're stuck with. And since we're deviating, we give our reasons.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that, I think I can support the motion, then, because I sense that those appraisals were done on a rather quick basis without a deep look into the building. I've had six months of poring over this building myself, and seeing the flaws in this building. I suspect they're going to have to spend all their money to get it fixed.
Careful, Councilmen, we haven't closed yet.
Well, Andrew, I don't expect you're going to make as much money on this as you thought originally in the days, and I know that's all right, that's your risk, because you're an entrepreneur. But I will go ahead and support the motion, then, having had it clear and on the record that there are reasons why sometimes a public body can vote to accept less than appraisers say they should.
Correct.
All right.
Anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Art?
No, that's all.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion. Please vote.
One final comment, Ms. Mayor.
I think not now. There's a motion on the floor, so. Pardon, there's a motion. Please vote.
Just a comment.
Please post. He's coming. He's writing his recipe for dinner. Not going to let you go today. Okay, that's one. We got, we're only one-third of the way there. Hold on. Thank you. On item number 53, would you care to continue with this, Councilman Barlow?
I do, Mayor. Thank you so very much. Andrew, as well as Bill, as you all very well know, when it comes to the policy that the city of Las Vegas has, as relates to the minority participation within the redevelopment area, either both of you or one or two of you can speak on that, as far as what your goals are, as relates to minority participation in this development deal moving forward.
I think that it would probably be most appropriate to have Zappos answer that, since they're going to be doing the heavy lifting on construction. So with your permission, Councilman?
Thank you.
I'd like to call Chris Nielsen down, the chief operating officer of Zappos.
Mr. Nielsen, be glad to hear from you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Nielsen, the chief financial officer at Zappos. With regard to your question, we view ourselves to be a diverse company. We value minorities, women-owned businesses, local businesses as well. We've already met with National Association of Minority Contractors, and have the intent to consider all three of those factors in our decision-making as we go forward with contractors.
Okay, I can appreciate that. And welcome to downtown, and much success to you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
So with that being said, Mayor and Council, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation of this item, subject to all conditions. And I'm not sure if we want to wait for my colleague, Councilman Wilson, on his last day. I want to make sure that he gets all the votes in he can.
I'm sure he's going to do that. We're going to search for him. And, but nonetheless, there's a motion, and, pardon?
Oh, he just might have to prosecute us.
Okay. I'm sure he'll catch up. City clerk can do it late, but I would like to call on the motion. Please, please vote. Please post. And the motion carries. He will add on, I'm sure, himself orally. We will now move on to item number, and by the way, Mr. Nielsen, you look none the worse for wear. You have no circles under your eyes or anything. I mean, it's just obviously very good for your health. Okay, and now we're going to give Mr. Wolfson a chance on his last day to go backwards and vote on the motion, number 53.
What have we been talking about for the last hour? Just kidding. Do you have to post it?
You have to do it orally.
Okay, I'd like to put on the record, real quickly, this is my last meeting, and this is probably in the seven and a half years I've been on the council, one of the most significant votes I can make. And Mr. Shea, you're in good company. We're talking about the Lou Ruvo Center for Brain Health. We're talking about the World Market Center. We're talking about the Smith Center, and many other properties downtown. But I think when you talk about something that can affect so many people over time, this is an incredible, incredible opportunity. So I'm proud to vote in the affirmative on the two remaining? Is it one or two?
You're on number 53 you're voting on.
53, I'm voting yea.
Thank you. Okay, now, we are moving on to the last. The two-thirds got us there. We are on to item number 46, and Councilman Barlow again, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and once again, much success, and I'm looking forward to all of the great new developments that are becoming into the downtown Las Vegas community, and welcome. So with that being said, move to follow staff's recommendation, subject to all conditions, on this item.
There's a motion. Please vote.
Is there an opportunity to make a final comment, or no?
Councilman Coffin?
You haven't asked. Your honor, thank you very much for recognizing me. Let's just slow down just a little bit here. I, first of all, I'm not going to go against this. I'm going to say some things I hope you'll appreciate, but let's just not let the sands run out of the hourglass yet. I want to tell you that I am a person who is now 69 years old. I was in my father's business in 1966, doing our best to cope with the worst recession that this city ever saw, before and up until 2008, 9, 10, and 11. Something happened in 1967 that is eerily similar to what is happening here. This transaction is part of it. And I remember very much when I was a college student studying business, and I was an admirer of the great, late Howard Hughes. Obviously, reclusive, but much written about figure at that time. And he moved to Las Vegas, and he invested, not immediately, but that he invested, and he invested, and he invested, and he couldn't stop investing, because he began to see what he had moved into, what he had. And what he did do was change the chemistry of this town tremendously. It wasn't making everybody happy at the time. He broke some eggs to make that omelet, but he did it with money. And he poured millions upon millions into this town, and it changed the whole dynamic. And I know it was upsetting to a lot of people. But if you hadn't, you had to have been me, in essence, going around driving a truck trying to sell a case of oil to a gas station, trying to collect $7.70 from the previous gas station to collect, to keep the business going, because there was no money in Las Vegas. Nothing comes close to this current recession. It is eerily similar, and I have not met Mr. Shea, but it is eerily similar to me, that someone is coming into town who really believes in this town, who wasn't here, stuck in the old ways, sees something here that others didn't. And many, many people had the opportunity to see what this guy sees, and they're sticking their bank account wholesale, lock, stock, and barrel into this city. I suspect, and I don't want someone to write and say that I just think that Tony Shea is the next Howard Hughes. I don't want anybody to say that, because they're so different. But there's something eerily similar to these circumstances. And the fact that Hughes putting money in raised everybody's vote in those days, and saved thousands of businesses. And I suspect what's happened is part of the reason, and maybe the only reason, that people are investing in Las Vegas now is because of Shea and his partners. So that, I need to make sure that we understand that, as the history of this transaction is written. And this is the only vote I'm going to cast. I didn't cast votes on approving city hall, or buying the land, selling anything. But I am struck by this, and I think it's a significant vote. And for that reason, I'm very proud to vote for it. And I hope that the Las Vegas moving forward from today is propelled, just as the Las Vegas was propelled from 1967 forward for the next 45 years.
Thank you, Councilman.
I will be voting in favor now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion, which finalizes everything. Is Mr. Shea here?
Yes.
You said he was here. I didn't see him.
Would you like to see him?
I would love him to stand up, if you would, or come forward. We're going to...
Let's make him talk.
We're going to make the vote. I wouldn't do that unless he wants to. But this is an unbelievable day, and we need to thank you, as well as your staff. But let me get the vote first. Do not want this interrupted. There's a motion.
Please vote.
Please vote. There's no motion. I did that. So, congratulations. Thank you, Andrew, Tom, everybody on staff. This is simple. I got to stand up and thank you. I just got to do that, because this was a huge effort and pain for this city, but it's beautiful days ahead.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. So if you would, Mr. Shea, come forward. Would you address us just briefly? I know you told my husband this is your seat, but it's ours until what date?
27th.
The 27th of February?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we will just walk from it.
I think technically it's Andrew's, and then he's going to lease it to us. So, yeah, I'm kind of at a loss for words, just because this has been such a long process. And, you know, when we first, we've actually been looking for a place to house Zappos for over five years. And we found out about this opportunity, I guess, a year and a half ago or so. And originally, we thought, oh, let's be like other companies, like Apple, or Google, or Nike, that have these amazing campuses. And so we actually started brainstorming amongst our employees, what can we do to build our dream campus? And when this opportunity came up to move downtown, we actually started rethinking that. And we started thinking, actually, let's not be like the other companies, and let's not be insular and only care about our employees. And so for me, what's really exciting is really, we're not building a campus. We want to help contribute, and help build a community, and really integrate and contribute to the community around our campus. And so, you know, I happen to be the face right now, here in front of you, but this is really about much more than Zappos, and it's really about, I mean, just to give a quick example, the, in the past few months, we've actually already had five other technology startup companies move from other states to here. And so we're already seeing a lot of things happen that extend well beyond Zappos. And for me, that's just really exciting, because that's the city that I want to live in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item 48. Okay, this is under planning, and discussion for possible action regarding a beer wine cooler off-sale license. Two Sisters Supermarket, Dos Hermanos Supermercado, 1,000 North Rancho Drive, this is in Councilman Barlow's area, is the applicant present. Barlow's area, is the applicant present? I see. And if you would, please state.
Thank you, Your Honor. Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. On December 21st, the City Council issued a temporary license to Letitia Musey, owner of the Two Sisters Market, pending a report from the Metropolitan Police Department. That report was given to Business Licensing on December 30th, 2011. The Metro report has been included in your binders. They had no concerns at all about personal or criminal history. They had some continuing questions about some of the finances. Staff has been able to meet with the applicant and resolve those issues, and we recommend approval at this time, and the applicant is here. I'll allow her to introduce herself.
Thank you. Please state your name. Come close to the microphone.
My name is Letitia Musey.
Welcome.
And I represent Two Sisters Supermarket, Dos Hermanas Mercado, Supermercado, and I would like to have, to apply, to get everything through for the licensing, for the liquor license.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel here, please? Councilman Barlow, this is in your ward?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Duddleston, for the information that you've brought forward. And also, I would like to congratulate the business owner on bringing the business into the Ward Five community. So with that, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation of approval, subject to all conditions on this item, and say good luck to you as you move forward with your business operation.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Congratulations. Go forth. And now we are on to resolutions. And this is R32012, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consentings to the Undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, RDA, in Connection with the Commercial Visual Improvement Program Agreement, CVIP, between RDA and Nickel Associates LLC, Owner and CVIP Participant Located at 1017 South First, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of RDA. Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Note this item is related to RDA Item 5 RA-1-2012. Mr. Art.
Thank you, Mayor, for the record. Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This is part of our VIP project. The item is in order. It's for four new businesses and some, two retail spaces downtown in Ward Three. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I move for approval of this resolution and request that by reference, all comments made and all exhibits shown in the Redevelopment Authority Agency be attached to the minutes of this meeting on this item.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Art. We move on to R42012, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consentings to the Undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, RDA, concerning an interlocal agreement between the City of Las Vegas City and the RDA for the RDA to provide funding for the construction and rehabilitation of the West Side School located 330 West Washington Avenue and the redevelopment of the adjacent Variety Early Learning Center located 990 D Street, and authorizing the execution of the interlocal agreement by the RDA, Ward Five. Councilman Barlow, note that this is related to RDA Item 6 RA22012. Mr. Art.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a procedural item to approve a funding agreement between the Redevelopment Agency and the city for this project. A funding appropriation was previously made by the council. The item is in order. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, move to follow staff's recommendations, subject to all conditions on this item.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote. Motion carries. Item number 51, R52012, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consentings to the Undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, RDA, concerning an interlocal agreement between the City of Las Vegas, City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, RDA, for the RDA to provide funding for D Street infrastructure improvements between Washington and Owens Avenues, and authorizing execution of the interlocal agreement by the RDA. This is in Ward Five with Councilman Barlow. Note that this is related to item RDA Item 7 RA32012. Mr. Art.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, again, the funding has already been appropriated by the City Council, so it's not a funding appropriation. It's an agreement to recognize that funding appropriation. The item is in order. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, move to follow staff's recommendations, subject to all conditions on this item.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to boards and commissions. Boards and commissions, Abeyance Item for Possible Considerational Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada RTC Advisory Committee on Bus Bench Shelter Construction and Maintenance. Mel Irwin, Term Expired, January 7th, 2012. Procedure for this board requires the City Council to appoint a new member to fill this seat. Is there a recommendation and motion? Yes. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I wish to appoint Rebecca Madrano as a member of the RTC Advisory Committee on Bus Bench Shelter Construction and Maintenance. Rebecca was full-time employed until seven years ago, when she became disabled. She started a neighborhood watch program then, where she nurtured, which she nurtured into the Sunrise Gardens Neighborhood Association, which is a very active and vocal senior group with a passionate interest in bus transportation. Rebecca is a strong, intelligent leader, whose abilities I'm sure will be appreciated on the committee. Therefore, I move to approve Rebecca Madrano as a member of this committee.
Thank you very much. Any questions, discussion by counsel? There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Onto item 55, and congratulations to her. For Possible Action, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Adrushan Andy Armenian, Term Expires, February 5th, 2012. The option is for the City Council to reappoint Mr. Armenian or appoint a new member to fill the seat. And it's my understanding that Mr. Armenian would like to continue to serve, and there is interest to have him reappointed, but I would take a motion.
Motion to reappoint, Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion. Any questions, discussion? There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. I'm sure you will let Mr. Armenian know, or is he here? No. Yes? Okay, thank you. Recommending, recommending committee bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, Abeyance Item, Bill Number 2011-46. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman Bill Number 2011-46, in order to remove the licenses zoning provisions that prohibit Class III jewelry stores, pawn shops, auto pawn businesses, and other second-hand dealers from locating Las Vegas Boulevard between Charleston Boulevard and Sahara Avenue in private federal related matters.
Thank you very much. Mr. Flynn, Fag, if you would, please come forward, since this is my motion. I think the appetite is not there on this, but I would just like to make a statement as to what this is.
Certainly.
So can you please show just what I had asked?
Certainly, I would be happy to do so, Mayor.
Thank you.
As you're aware, there's currently a restriction for pawn shops locating on Las Vegas Boulevard between Charleston on the north and Sahara on the south. Generally, looking at pawn shops in the City of Las Vegas, there are a couple of different regulations that deal with the number of pawn shops and where they can be located. Looking first at map number one, that's shown on the overhead, in terms of the number of pawn shops, we currently have 24 pawn shops within the City of Las Vegas, and as you can see by the green stars on the map, they are fairly dispersed throughout the limits of the city. In terms of the number of pawn shop licenses, those are regulated by Title VI of Las Vegas Municipal Code. They are done in increments of 50,000, increases in 50,000 residents in the city. For example, just a year or two ago, we issued the license. When we hit 600,000 residents, we will not be able to issue another pawn shop license until our population hits 650,000 residents. And so the overall number of licenses is tied directly to increases in the city's population. Moving on to map number two, another thing that dictates the location of pawn shops is the required distance separation from protected uses, those being, number one, residential areas, and then, number two, from other pawn shop locations. The code currently has a 200-foot separation distance from residential and a 1,000-foot distance separation from other pawn shop locations. Here on the map, the areas shown in red demonstrate the protected areas, or our residential areas, and it is within those areas that pawn shops may not be located. And that is not proposed to change with the ordinance that you have before you. We will still have the distance separations in place. Moving on to map number three, the question is relative to this specific section of Las Vegas Boulevard that we're talking about, between Charleston and Sahara, where the restriction currently exists. If we look at the separation distance requirements for the protected uses from residential areas and from other pawn shops, there are approximately six parcels, as shown in green here on the map, where pawn shops would be able to locate within that segment of Las Vegas Boulevard. And so again, because of the distance separation requirements that are in place, that does restrict the properties where pawn shops would be able to locate. Madam Mayor, I don't know if you have any other explanation that you'd like.
No, I think that's fine. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Fag. This whole issue came about, and I just want to make it a matter of public record. I do feel as my job as mayor, it's to look to every opportunity to increase jobs, make opportunities available to the private sector to invest, and also fan tourism in our town. As you know, another area of my concern always is to protect our residents, make sure their property and their, their interests come first. But the issue at hand really was how I came about moving or coming to the review committee with this. We have, as Mr. Fag mentioned, restricted licenses, only 24 allowed, and as you could see by the stars on the first map, they, the pawn shops are located and interspersed all the way around the community. And I learned, in trying to help a downtown issue, that there was an ordinance on the book that precluded any pawn shop from having an operation between Charleston and Sahara. In examining that and finding out why that was an issue, I called both our EUD, our Economic Development, and was referred to our counsel, COUNSEL, SEL, who informed me that the ordinance had been on the books for 21 years. There was no background why it was there. So I asked him, if there's no reason for it to be there, because we have the buffer that protects the residents, how do we remove an ordinance and just make it like it was a nonentity? And he said, unfortunately, you have to have another ordinance to remove the first ordinance. So going forward with the concepts of trying to bring tourism and knowing the change in the concepts of how pawn shops are viewed these days, somewhat akin to the antique auction show that goes around, and because of the most popular show that is apparently in the world, Pawn Stars, they've become a much different type of entity. And so it wasn't that any particular pawn shop said to me, we want to move from the first map locations, and you can see these stars. It was just as part of my role to find out what ordinances are. Are they practical? Are they ridiculous? Are they restrictive? Don't we want to create jobs? And I will tell you, people have called me, emailed me, that they come into our city specifically to go to the gold and silver pawn shop, which is down north of Charleston. So my motion had been to remove that, just to allow free enterprise to take place should a pawn shop wish to move, which to me would mean increased jobs, jobs that would either remodel, build. And as you know, for those of you who are here all the time, between Sahara and Charleston, we have tattoo parlors, we have massage parlors, and we also have the Olympic Garden. So I know that pawn shops are not having problems with Metro, and it just seemed a wise thing to remove that ordinance. But as this came before the review committee because of issues that they felt, I believe, and I am going to ask specifically to Councilman Barlow, in whose ward this is, this issue, to just make, oh, it's Mr. Coffin, Councilman Coffin, to respond as you have with your wish. But again, it was just to create the jobs, increase the tourism, and actually develop an area which is the entry to our city, which is not very attractive with that black building that used to be, I believe, the Holy Cow, and with a commercial development north of Sahara and west of Las Vegas Boulevard, which is a very heavily trafficked commercial area, but has not been remodeled as long as I can remember. And with a new development perhaps coming in near the allure and a new Chinese theater or Chinese hotel-driven, hotel and casino, to me, this just was lift the restrictions. And if a pawn shop should want to move in there, they'd have to come before council anyway, and maybe begin to upgrade the entire area from Sahara to Charleston. So I don't know if you have any questions or anything, but I certainly would defer to Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that, and I know all the residents of Ward Three who live near Las Vegas Boulevard in that stretch appreciate your withdrawing this bill. And your motives were pure. I know, because I was with you when you started this thinking process. So I have every reason to believe that in the future, we can work together on something that might make sense. It just takes a little time to try to figure out what that would be, and I really appreciate you withdrawing this. Thank you.
Thank you. So
Do we need a motion?
On a withdrawal? No, I just withdraw it, I believe.
No, there should be a motion on the record reflecting withdrawal. I would recommend a motion to strike.
Motion to strike, you will make that motion.
All right, if you wish, I will move to strike item 56, Abeyance Item, Bill 2011-46.
Okay, there's a motion, please vote. Please post. Thank you. We will move on to item, thank you, Mr. Fag, appreciate it. We will move on to item number 57, Bill Number 2012-1. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Bill Number 2012-1, in order to adopt that certain agreement entitled First Amendment and Restatement of the Development Agreement between KAG Property LLC and Private Federal Related Matters.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve? Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 56, Bill Number 2012-3. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2012-3, in order to amend the Town Center Development Standards Manual to adjust the land use treatment of pet boarding, solar panels, and small wind energy systems in private federal related matters.
Councilman Barlow?
Yes, before we move forward, I want to defer to Councilman Ross to see if there was any comments that you would have in relation to your sponsored bill, sir.
Through the mayor, thank you, Councilman. Actually, I just think that this recognizes the city's continued movement towards allowing people to look for other alternatives to renewable energy products for their own personal lives, for their homes, or their businesses. The other one in regards to the pet boarding, some of our town center standards don't allow some of that. Mayor, you were talking a few minutes ago about trying to help businesses, and this is just another step in that right direction so we can, we can get these things done. So thank you, Councilman, I appreciate you allowing me to comment, or Mayor, you allowed me to comment.
Thank you. Yes. Councilman, motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. We will move on to item, items 59 through 61, Bill 2012-2, 2012-4, 2012-5, are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. We will move on to new bills. We will move on to new bills. And this is item 63. Item 63 through 67, Bills 2012-6. What did I say? So sorry. Item 62 through 67, Bills 2012-6 through 2012-11 will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, February 14th, 2012. I would like to have these bills read, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2012-6, an ordinance to continue to authorize on a temporary basis the waiver of the ord regenation charge for a new urban lounge and tavern limited license, provided for related matters. Bill 2012-7, an ordinance to revise the requirements regarding the release of feral cats, authorizing the release to qualified feral cat colonies and to provide related matters. Bill 2012-8, an ordinance to authorize the city to treat certain animal control violations and civil violations to a civil penalty rather than proceeding by means of misdemeanor prosecution to establish procedures for the processing and disposition of notices of infraction regarding such violations of private related matters. Bill 2012-9, an ordinance concerning city of Las Vegas, Nevada, special improvement district number 1507, Las Vegas Jones Boulevard, Elkhorn Road to Horse Drive, and Grand Teton Drive, Maverick Street to Decatur Boulevard, providing for the payment and the cost of expenses of said improvements, assessing a portion of the cost of said improvements against accessible law tracks and parts of land benefited by said improvements, ratifying and approving and confirming all action previously taken and prescribing details connected therewith. Bill Number 2012, 2012-10, an ordinance relating to the collection of solid waste authorized and franchise to certain fees pertaining to the recordation, maintenance, and release of liens associated with solid waste collection services and provide related matters. And finally, Bill Number 2012-11, an ordinance to update and consolidate various municipal code provisions governing special events and similar activities and to provide related matters.
Thank you very much. I would like to assign these new bills, 2012-6 through 2012-11 are assigned to council members, Barlow and Coffin, for recommending. Thank you. Now, we are not going to recess because there are so few items in the afternoon session, so I would give you a minute or two if you want to get a drink. Are we okay? We're four people. We're five. We can keep going. So on we go. We're on to number 68, business item, for possible action, any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
Do you have everything loaded?
I don't see anybody.
No, I didn't.
Then Councilman Anthony, what do you have?
Okay, Mayor, I have item number 69, abatement of nuisance for 1,300 Douglas Drive, property owner, Robert J. Subelken. Staff recommends that be stricken, and that's the only item I have.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
And that will be my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, Councilwoman Tarkanian, I see this is in your ward.
I move to strike.
You moved to strike. All right, there's a motion, please vote. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 70, public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 3205 Lava Avenue for fees in the amount of $2,272, and assess a maximum of $34,650 in daily and failed inspection. Civil penalties for a total of $36,922. Property owner is Fernando Jimenez, and this is in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin and Mr. Bowes. Public hearing, I declare it open, and Mr. Bowes.
For the record, excuse me, Mayor.
That's okay, please.
For the record, Michael Bowes, Code Enforcement Manager. The major cross streets to this property are Owens and Teton. This case was opened on July 20, 2011. A notice and order of substandard nuisance condition was issued on August 8, 2011, and the case was closed on December 6, 2011. The property is not in foreclosure. The code enforcement staff completed 12 inspections on the site addressing the substandard conditions. The property owner did not comply with the notice and order, so the city was required to expend city funds to abate the conditions. The abatement started on December 2, 2011, and was completed on December 6, 2011. The abatement work consisted of removal of refuge wastes, high weeds from all yards, and the application of herbicide, and a boarding of all windows and doors. The out-of-pocket expenses incurred by the city are $2,272. Additional daily civil penalties are $34,650, for a total fines and penalties of $36,922. And the property is valued by Zillow as of January 12 of this year at $36,500.
There are more penalties than its value. Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And what are the major cross streets, please?
The major cross streets are Owens and Teton.
I think you said that. Thank you. Anyone wishing to come forward on this, to be heard on this item? Is there a motion, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a long documented record of trying to reach the owners on this, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Do we suspect they don't live in this country, or what do we suspect?
I don't know, sir.
We have no way of knowing. Okay, we've tried how many times to reach them?
I'd have to check the records, sir. But members, certified, we're required by law that there's a notice of certified mail returned or received.
Okay. I move to approve the assessment of the full amount of hard costs and the civil penalties for a total of $34,650.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Please post.
Careful. Well, I'm just looking at the.
Motion carries. Thank you. Would you want to get in on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Your Honor?
For item 70.
Your Honor, I made a mistake on that.
Well, we have to pull it back then. Let's rescind that vote and.
Move to recall.
Thank you. There's a move to recall, item number, what did we just say? 70. Please vote on that.
Yeah, because I, since I stated, Your Honor, oh, we have to vote on that?
We have to recall it first, please reconsider. Excuse me. All right.
Not voting to recall.
There's a motion, please to rescind the vote on that, item number 70, please vote. Post. Oh, my.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, motion carries. Let's try it again, Councilman Coffin.
Item 70, I move to assess the full civil penalties and hard costs in the amount of $36,922.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote. Yes, right next to me. I'll move my microphone. There's a motion. Please post. It's getting late in the day, and he hasn't had lunch. What can I tell you? You crunch loud, so loud it goes from my, your space to my space. Okay, motion, let's go on to item number 71, public hearing for possible action to consider request for a waiver and/or reduction of fees totaling $4,815.87, including interest recorded against the property and civil penalties in the amount of $31,000, for a total of $35,815.87 pending recording against the property located in 4520 East Ogden, property owner, Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corp., care of Wells Fargo Bank, N.A. This is in Councilman Coffin's Ward Three. It's a public hearing, I declare it open. Is the owner present? Mr. Bowes.
May I remember, says Council Mike Bowes, Code Enforcement Manager.
Oh, excuse me, we have owner or representative. Please do come forward. Sorry, you've been sitting so patiently. I thought you were ready to run for the door. Please, Mr. Bowes.
The main cross streets to this property are Lamb and Stewart, and I want to be clear in stating that the abatement action was completed by the city prior to foreclosure by Freddie Mac on the property. The case was opened in May 10, 2011. A notice and order was issued May 31, 2011, and the case was closed on August 11, 2011. The abatement work consisted of removal of all refuge wastes, a not permitted room addition, and the securing of boarding of all openings, windows, and doors. The city's out-of-pocket expenses for that work were $4,815.87, and civil penalties in the amount of $31,000 were accrued. The total fines and civil penalties are $35,815.87. That was assessed by the city council at your September 21, 2011 city council meeting, and to date, no payment has been received on any of the fines or penalties. As of January 12 of this year, the property is valued at $48,500 by Zillow.
And you are owner or represent?
I'm the real estate agent for Freddie Mac, Federal National Mortgage Association, and the property, all of these fees occurred prior to foreclosure. The property was foreclosed on November 15, and they would like the penalties reduced or waived. They are not disputing any of the abatement fees or.
Would you be good enough to say your name and your affiliation? So sorry.
My name is Lisa Porcella. I'm with Realty Marketing Group, and we currently have this property listed at $39,900.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Councilman Ross.
So you're okay with the hard, thank you, Mayor, you're okay with the hard costs? Are you asking for the city to waive the civil penalties?
My client would like to have the daily penalties waived or reduced.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard at this time? Please state your name.
My name is Anthony Hart, since it's the bank, and they willing to deal with it, everybody get the money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I would like to know what they intend, how they intend to keep the property up. Do they have a contractor out to water the trees and to keep it nice?
Thank you.
Yes, we actually have power and water on, and I have receipts of, since the bank took possession of the property, all the money that they've spent on it. They have weekly yard service and monthly interior cleaning of the property. It's in very good condition now, as far as I'm sure what it looked like before. We do have an offer on the property. It's been verbally accepted for $37,900. So a new owner, cash buyer, is going to be taking possession of the property soon after, you know, close of escrow, and I'm assuming they will take care of it.
And the new owner is aware of these assessments, possible?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Coffin?
Well, they're not owning it yet, I'm sorry. They're just, they just made an offer, so they're aware.
They made an offer, but are they aware of these possible assessments?
They're aware, but they're not willing to assume them, so this has to be resolved prior to.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. In view of the fact that Freddie Mac is stepping in here, I think we should waive most of these civil penalties, but not all. So therefore, I would move that the city assess the full out-of-pocket costs of $4,815.87, and in addition to that, $310 of, well, let's see, yeah, 90% of the civil penalties, which is actually less than one day's civil penalty, of, I'll make it $310 for a total of $5,125.87.
Thank you.
One, 1%.
Excuse me.
One or 10%?
10% would be the opposite.
3,100.
So 10, I'm waiving, suggesting we waive 90% of that, which means $310 balance left.
3,500.
You guys can do your math, but I think you'll find it works out. Yeah, the $3,500 civil penalty, oh, I'm sorry, your math has already reduced it to that amount. Thank you. I was boring in on the numbers that I saw, Mike, thank you very much.
So could you restate?
So I think, no, I think, Your Honor, I understand this, what he's portraying it differently, and I like the way you're portraying it, I just was not used to the new system. So therefore, let me restate that motion. I now move that we assess the total out-of-pocket costs of $4,815.87, and 10% of the daily civil penalties instead of 100%, which would be $3,100 for a total of $7,915.87.
There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to number 72, public hearing for possible action to consider request for a waiver and/or fee, a reduction of fees totaling $1,986.49, including interest and civil penalties in the amount of $37,500, for a total $39,486.49 recorded against the property located at 1213 Satis Street, property owner Windsor Mortgage Holding Limited. This is in Councilman Coffin's Ward Three. Public hearing, I now declare it open. Is the property owner present or represented? If we'll start with Mr. Bowes first, please.
Michael Bowes, Code Enforcement Manager. The main cross streets to this property are Mojave and Washington, and this property was abated prior to it being purchased by, I believe, the current owner of Windsor Mortgage. The property was in foreclosure. Our case was opened on July 24, 2010. A notice and order was issued on August 19, 2010, and we closed the case on November 11, 2010. The abatement work consisted of removal of waste, refuge, high vegetation from all yards, a not permitted shed structure, and securing of all windows and doors. Our out-of-pocket expenses were $1,986.49. Daily civil penalties were $37,500, for a total fines and civil penalties of $38,846.49. The city council assessed those costs against the property at its May 4, 2011 city council meeting. To date, there's been no payment on the civil fines or penalties, and as of January 12 of this year, the property is valued by Zillow at $32,100.
Thank you very much. Would you state your name, please, and your affiliate, unless you're the owner?
I am the owner.
Oh.
Nice to meet you, Mayor Goodness.
Nice to meet you.
Hello. Hello. Okay.
The microphone, sir.
I wish that I, oh, right here.
And if you'd state your name, yes, and your affiliate.
My name is Arthur Fuss, and, and I'm the fellow who picked up this property. I did a.
How long ago, please?
I bought it in November of 2011. Unfortunately, I did a, I did a title search online, I didn't see the lien. Here's the information, I guess that's what you get for 10 bucks. And it was bought from a servicer that does bulk sales, and so I was a little guy. And what I would like to ask for is, I've had some estimates to really bring the property up to snuff and actually make it better looking than any other property on the block, about $18,000. I'd be willing to do that if the council would be willing to, you know, waive these fees, and I don't mind paying for whatever the costs were. And so there it is. I mean, I've done this before in Las Vegas. I'm from California, I like Las Vegas, haven't made any money here yet, but I would, I would like the opportunity to hire shilling contracting in Las Vegas to fix the place and make it really look nice, and, and then sell it as a, you know, ready to move in place.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to hear from other members of the council. This is a little unusual. It's out of the norm for the way we've been handling these things, and so the first failure to comply happened before I was on the council, and so I'd like to hear what's happened and where you've had sequential failures on these things.
I'm so sorry, I was having the private conversation. What did you say? You know, we're without lunch.
Did you answer?
Sustenance. I didn't have these pretzels or peanuts or whatever.
I just want to make a comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. No, don't give me the noise makers.
Thank you.
Comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
And it's, and it's public, it's a public hearing anyway, so go ahead, please.
I just want to say this, Councilman, I will follow whatever direction you certainly want with this property, but sir, you purchased this property, Mike, if I correct you if I'm wrong, we did the abatement before he purchased it.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Now he's purchased it.
Yes, sir.
He's the owner.
Yes, sir.
He's standing here before us, he's willing to pay the hard costs. That's what we want. I mean, even the young lady that was up here earlier that was representing Freddie Mac, dangerous thing to do in front of us, but the dialogue is open now with these lenders, we're getting there. I mean, we're not there yet, and I think that foreclosure registry ordinance is just, you know, it's moving in the right direction. So I just want to say thank you for being here. You recognize the challenges we're having as a city council with all these properties that we're spending taxpayer money on, abating, and we shouldn't be doing that. So it's good to have you here. I'm going to support the councilmen, but that's my, those are my comments, Councilman.
Okay, thank you very much. It is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this? Jim Digan, please.
My name is Anthony Hart. It sounds good to me. And this man is going to take over and clean it up. And hey, just one more piece of property is off the market. Good luck, Mr. Coffin.
I'll do more than just make it acceptable. I'll make it really very, very nice. And I, I promise to do so.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
It's going to take some math, Your Honor. Despite the fact you have an empty stomach, we probably ought to consider waiving-
That's why your math has turned bad, because yours is open too.
We can't waive the hard costs.
No, I didn't ask.
And the city's out of pocket on that.
We understand.
Even the 90% waiver levies a very heavy fine. I am just curious about the failed inspection civil penalties portion of this, for example. Mike, is that 500 a day?
No, it's a, it's a graduated scale. We charge, when we go out and on the third inspection, we start charging both for the inspection at the rate of $120 an hour. And then we start assessing a failed inspection penalty that begins, that's different than your daily civil penalties. So the failed inspection begins at $150. The next inspection, it goes to $300. The third inspection and every inspection thereafter is $500.
So those are real costs, in a sense. You might not call them hard costs?
Actually, they're, they are a penalty. We, we charge both our $120 inspection cost and then we charge a failed inspection penalty.
Okay.
Councilman Coffin?
Yeah.
With your mayor, with your mayor permission?
I'm willing to listen to any comment.
With your permission, Mayor. I don't think those are part of the hard costs. The hard costs are what it costs to pay the contractor to go out and clean up the property. Is that the $1,900?
That's the, yes, sir.
Okay. So Councilman Coffin, the fees that he was quoting are not the hard costs. The hard costs are the $1,986.49.
I agree. What I was wondering is if inside that $2,450 on the failed inspection, if that in fact included the time of inspectors to go out?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. So that's, in essence, a hard cost.
Yep.
All right. Let's throw this up and see if it flies. I'm going to move for the council's approval to levy the out-of-pocket costs of $1,900 and change, $1,900 and, $1,986.49, plus the total failed inspection civil penalties of $2,450, but waive all the daily civil penalties. And I don't have a calculator in front of me. Mike?
Mayor Goodman, may I ask, what would you pay for this property, sir?
I, around $20,000.
I mean, so the motion-
If I put the $18,000 in, which I'm projecting, I'll be able to get my money out without getting hurt. That's what I'm trying to do.
I know. Maybe it's because it's my last day and I'm a softy. All right, well.
Mayor Goodman?
Thank you, the math is-
Mayor Goodman?
The math has come up with that.
Mr. Bous?
Excuse me, there's a question. Councilman?
Ricky, go ahead.
Councilman Barlow, would you, are you on?
Yes, I am, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. When was the last inspection?
October 9th, 2010.
October 9th, 2010?
Yes, sir.
And you purchased the property?
December 1st, to be exact, is when the quitclaim deed-
What year?
2011.
So the last inspection was a year prior to the purchase, Mr. Bous? A year and a month? You said 2010, right? We're reviewing the record. Okay.
November 17th, 2010.
So November 7th, 2010 was the last inspection?
Correct.
And sir, you purchased the property December of 2011?
It, it consummated in a quitclaim deed coming to me in December 1st of 2011, yes.
So everything was closed out? So the city did not do an inspection for an entire year and a month? And so what the city is asking you to do is pay for the civil daily penalties and the hard costs associated with this property?
You know, I would-
Well, that's a question for Mr. Bous.
My understanding is that, yes, the, the staff is-
Okay. No, that's fine. I just wanted a yes or no.
And then, yes.
Okay. And sir, you're, you're looking to put $18,000 into this property to revitalize it?
Well, you know, I've got about $20,000 is what I paid for it. And, you know, I did a title search, but this, this didn't come up. And so-
Are you an investor? Are you going to live in the home? Or are you looking to revitalize the home to put it back out on the market for sale?
That's exactly right.
Which one?
Revitalize the home and put it back for sale.
Okay.
So I would completely remodel the house, gingerbread it, make it look great, and then sell it and try and get my investment out of it.
So you don't have a problem with paying the hard costs?
No, I think that's fair.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Coffin? Having heard all of this. Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move, well, I think I made a motion. I'll restate it if you like.
Please.
To levy, again, the out-of-pocket costs of $1,986.49, waive all of the daily civil penalties, and however tack on the failed inspection civils, $2,450 for a total of $4,436.49. The neighborhood had to look at that for a long time, so we have to-
There's a motion? Please vote. Whoops. Sorry.
I just wanted to ask, you bought this home and then the penalties that accrued, accrued after the house was fixed, right? No?
No, ma'am. I, I bought the home December 1st and I just-
Two months ago, but, but you said that it was fixed up in 2010. No, it was not fixed up.
The inspection was in 2000, the last inspection was 2010.
Oh, I'm assuming the last inspection showed that it was already in order. It did not show that it was in order. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So there's a motion. There was a vote on the motion to assess, as Councilman Coffin said, there's a motion. It has been voted on. Please post. Please post. Okay. So at this point, would someone like to make another motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Please. Councilman Barlow?
I would like to move that the gentleman pays the hard costs and we waive the daily civil penalties. And sir, we're hoping that you do what you say and reinvest in this property, bring it back up so that this community can be revitalized.
Right. I, I've never been to this, this, I've never been to a city council meeting before, but I bought a bunch of pictures of before and after, in case that was of interest to you. I've done that.
No, we, we've seen the pictures from the, all of the-
No, I mean of other homes I've done in Las Vegas.
Okay, okay, all right.
So if there was an interest, I have it.
So, so the amount I would like to request that you pay is $1,986.49 of hard costs and all other fees and penalties be waived. That would be my motion at this time.
Thank you.
Could you just explain, because I know Mr. Coffin is probably wondering why? Could you just explain why you think that's the right way to go? Councilman Barlow?
Yes, we, we have a gentleman, we have a gentleman who's, I'm sorry. We have a gentleman here who's coming into the community to revitalize a home. And in addition to that, the city of Las Vegas chose not to re-inspect this property for more than a year. So why should he be held accountable for those additional fees when in fact, I believe, we haven't done our job properly as far as allowing a year to go by without at least going back to check on this property? And so that's my position on it.
I'd like to ask, in your envelope, how many homes have you purchased and refurbished, remodeled, or whatever? And then in Las Vegas?
You bet.
Sold? How many are there?
Eight. Four in the Summerlin area and then four in Las Vegas proper. This was the first one I bought this way.
Okay.
And so this is, and the four in Summerlin were for a 1031. I had an apartment building in Los Angeles, wanted to come to Las Vegas. Bought in Spanish Trails, four, listed with Beth Rossum. Fixed them all up, put about $30,000 into each home. Made them very, very nice. We sold them, we kind of broke even. And then I bought four at auction, very nice, nice places, but we fixed them up and we rented them out. So, but this one was a little bit different. But I don't do things without some sort of sense of pride. In fact, my partners met you, Richard Rappaport, his, his mom, Flo Rappaport, you know.
I hope that doesn't preclude me from voting.
Sorry, sorry.
There is a, I don't know whether Councilman Barlow's overlooking something here, because my notes show, before we get too generous here, I want to make sure that we're not dealing with a businessman who knows what he's doing and knows that in May, this council approved many of these penalties. Already. And that's what my notes show. Now you would be reversing your action of the May 4th council meeting.
2011? I'm getting lost in the dates here. I'm hungry too.
Yes, and further, further, the, the purchase price, Mike has negotiated a good purchase price, which really includes a discount of these fines. He knew what they were. He just didn't close until December 1st.
It's $20,000.
Michael knew what they were. He's not stupid. And he bought this thing knowing to discount, you know, the fines. That's why I moved, I think.
I'd like to interject. I did not know what they were.
Oh.
I did not. And I, I stated so initially. And with all due respect, I did a title search on Doc Edge and there's no mention of lien. Not that I shouldn't have had a title company search. I, I freely admit that that's, I should have done due diligence with a true title company. But I did do a, a title search online and it did not show the lien. So I didn't know about it because I didn't buy it till November.
Thank you, Michael. Did you know that-
And my name's Arthur, just for the record.
Did you know that the council had previously already levied the vast majority of these fines?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay. So that, that's something for the council to consider. If, if you want to be generous, okay. But remember, you know, we haven't been that generous with other people.
Councilman, did you make a motion? You did. There's a motion on the floor then to assess the hard costs, period? Correct. And I understand his first name's Arthur. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's a motion? Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good luck. We're going to come see you.
I'll do what I promised. Thank you very much, all of you.
All right. We'll move on to number 73. Public hearing for possible action to consider request for a waiver and/or a reduction of fees for two separate code enforcement abatement cases totaling $5,173.49 in out-of-pocket expenses, interest, and tax roll fee, and $1,950 in failed inspection civil penalties, and $56,050 in daily civil penalties recorded against the property located at 1457 North Gateway Road. Property owner Fiorella Tialdo. This is in Ward 3. Councilman Coffin, this is a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the property owner present? Please come forward. Or Representative, Mr. Bous?
Michael Bous, Code Enforcement Manager. The main cross streets to this property are Sand Hill and Owens. And as the mayor stated, this is an appeal of all costs, hard costs, out-of-pocket expenses, and civil penalties for this property for two separate code enforcement actions. This is a vacant lot. And what I propose to do, Mayor, is, and counsel, is to give you an overview of the first case and then an overview of the second case and to tell you the, the total costs and penalties that were assessed by the council.
Mayor Goodman, may I interrupt?
Yes, please.
But the applicant isn't here.
That's correct. We were unable to contact the applicant. We have had contact with the, the property owner in the past. But we, when she filed the appeal notice, there was no phone number. We looked into directory assistance, made every effort to try and get a hold of her. We sent her notification of this hearing via registered mail to the address on the assessor's rolls. And we have not heard anything from her, which is, coincidentally, the basis of her appeal is that she has been out of the country and was unaware of any of the actions that the city's taken against this property.
Well, Mayor Goodman, with your permission, so you want us to go forward, Mike, even though she's not here? It's her request to have the waiver, but she's not here.
I, I would just make a recommendation that maybe we continue to try and reach out to her, wait for her to come back to us, because it's her appeal. And I'm not sure it's really appropriate for us to make the case for her appeal. So my suggestion, Mayor, would be that you'd, you'd strike this item. And if we get, you know, some, or you could deny it or whatever you need to do and let her appeal again. But if she's not even here to represent her own case, it seems odd that we would have it before you.
Mayor, I, I would just say if she, if she appealed and she did, she's decided not to show up, then you, you have the, you have the ability to take action, one way or another. I mean, you, you can certainly obey it, but denial of the appeal is denial of the appeal. She doesn't come back after denial of this appeal. So if you, if you want to, if you want to continue, counsel, to try to get a hold of her, then you, you obey this item until the next one. And then Mr. Bous can go and try to get a hold of her. Fact of the matter is, she was the one who, who instituted this appeal before you. She would have been told when the appeal would be set, and she's chosen not to appear.
Mayor? Just as a suggestion, recommendation for the council to consider. Mr. Bous, is this the first time that this has been brought before us as relates to this request?
This appeal, yes, sir.
So in fairness, in my belief, I don't see any harm as far as obeying this possibly two weeks because something could have happened. We don't know. And if in fact she does not show at the next meeting, then I, I feel comfortable moving forward. But just giving the applicant the benefit of the doubt, for whatever reason, I think that would be more of a feasible approach to take, in my opinion.
This is a public hearing. Would you like to make comments?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. And this is right next to our new Doug Selby Park. We've put a lot of money into that thing. It looks nice. That's a nice neighborhood. And if, I mean, at some point, soon, we need this taken care of.
Thank you. What was the value on the property, please? The value?
As of January 12th of this year, the value on the property by Zillow was $35,600.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion then to obey this to the February 15th council meeting?
This move, we obey.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. If you will notify appropriately or a city clerk to notify that it's been abated. Mine didn't come through. Please post. I thought you not only did that, but... Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
If we could just return, I know we've closed item 72, but I'd like to hear from legal counsel what we do to unwind a lien that's already been recorded on item 72, the one that was passed with only the hard costs. May, May 4th council meeting, the members of this council, and I wasn't serving then, May, May fourth council meeting, the members of this council, and I wasn't serving then, went ahead and levied all those fines and penalties, and then a lien was recorded, which I think any person.
Mayor, excuse me, Councilman, but I'm sorry, you need to recall that item. You're talking about an item that's closed right now, and there probably needs to vote, be a vote for you to actually reconsider that item to hear this conversation about that particular item.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess.
Or we can, you know, talk about that kind of situation in briefings if you'd like, but if you're going to talk about that specific case, I suggest.
Okay, someone will have to make a motion to bring back that item.
No, I'll tell you what, Your Honor, I'm not going to make that motion.
Okay.
It, it could be something that council needs to be careful before they move too fast on, that's all.
Well, and I'd recommend, too, that you could talk to council anyway for future items. That would be my suggestion in this issue. Thank you.
And just so you know, we're, we're going to do a thorough briefing on this entire process at the upcoming briefing session to make sure everyone sees how all of these items flow through our process graphically so that everyone's on the same understanding.
Thank you.
And we can even show you some examples of recent actions so that it will be, you know, something that you can draw back to your discussions at the dais.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on to item seventy-four. I'd instruct the city. Is that correct, seventy-four? I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous building or nuisance letter abatements. Thank you. Now, citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name, please, for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there any members of the public who would wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Please state your name, and we will set this at three minutes, please.
Hello, I'm Hassan Joshua Collins. I'm a public manager for the Lord Jesus Christ, and just want to discuss real briefly, one thing is the Eighth Amendment. And just for those that don't know, it's that excessive bail shall not be required, nor excessive fines imposed, nor cruel and unusual punishments inflicted. I know that some of these tickets and jaywalking charges and trespassing charges are, you know, landing people in jail sometimes, and then they lose everything once they're in jail, whether there be their, their housing, or their job that they had, or, or, or whatever it is. So I just encourage maybe the council, I know you can't act on anything, but maybe overlook some of these fines and things and see, well, what percent of rent is this ticket or this charge? And, and, and see, is it really right to, to, to charge someone that much for, for whatever the charge is, whether it be a jaywalking, whatever. I mean, people I was in jail with when I was arrested for sleeping outside recently, they were in there for things like that, you know, and, and it, it really can bring a lot of oppression and, you know, cause homelessness and that type of thing. So hopefully, the city of Las Vegas doesn't create its own homeless problem. Also casinos, I know that, you know, this city's kind of built on that, but question, do casinos really uplift the community, or do they create addicts and homelessness, you know? And that's what I see a lot of, is that's actually what's, what's happening. A lot of people are blowing their whole SSI checks and things like that in the casinos and things like that, so. Just some things to consider, and just for those that haven't heard this already, sexual sin and greed leads to hell. Be sober, don't curse, smoke, gamble, or lie. You know, the Lord, you know, he wants us to live right and holy for him, and that's how, the only way we can have a, a right relationship with God is to live for him. Also, I was an ex-math instructor and pretty good in English, too, so if anyone sees me out there and needs help with tutoring, I do it for free, you know, if I have the time and everything, so just talk to me. And be, I'd love to help you maybe if I can, you know, with the, the math, or the English, anything like that. And anyways, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Goodman, I think Councilman Coffin needs some tutoring on math today.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
There are a lot of young people that can use your services.
Oh, yeah.
Plenty of places to volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, yeah. You guys have any ideas to help me with that, let me know, too. I don't have my own building or anything.
You might contact our Neighborhood Services.
Okay.
And anywhere else that you can, where else for volunteering for tutoring? Neighborhood Services.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak at this time, please? Don't forget to state your name. Please remove your hat if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tome Hodup. I've been here before. I know you guys recognize my face and whatnot. It's still the, I'm still having the same issue, whatnot. I actually brought pictures to, to illustrate the major concern that's going on within this city that nobody seems to want to address besides me. And by that being said, I guess what I'm actually talking about is, it seems to be a targeting that's happening only to specific people, and after this targeting is happening, there's either one or two things that are happening. They either become converted over, or they, no, matter of fact, three things. They either become converted over, incarcerated, or some amazing way that they pass away. And what I mean by that is that I come from a family that is completely, as I stated before, grandfather and a grandmother who helped build this city because my grandfather is a construction, is a ex-construction worker, and he worked for almost twenty, twenty-five years in this city. They moved here in fifty-two. My grandfather served in Vietnam. With that being said, they had five children along with grandchildren. But during that time, you know, it was, during the Great Depression, they made African-Americans either choose, you go to the war, or you go to jail. So he chose war. And during that time, I don't think that he had a true understanding what serving the country was. What I mean by that is that the envelope that government presents, which is Freemasonry. And under, under the research that I had to apply myself, my story is no different than Moses, which was a family where you go up through the ranks thinking one thing is one thing, and then you find out, because you have this one incident that completely ruffles that. This young man to my right, the jurisdiction that he's over is the jurisdiction that I played in, which is Doolittle Recreational Center. I played late night hoops, served in that community from Boys and Girls Club on. When the police apprehended me during that time, I was completely working towards that goal. I was working towards saving money, working at RTC, Transportation, and then all of a sudden, my world gets spent out around, gets spent around. Anybody knows anything about Freemasonry is that it's, it's one handshake, one sign, once a couple of symbols, and that's it. If they target you or whatnot, they're going to get exactly what they want. And so it's interesting that, as I come before you after two years, from my family members being part of, Mrs. Mayor, you wasn't here during the time, but your husband, given many times on, on Channel Two and Channel Four, the statement that you guys had, street teams, I didn't know what that meant. So, but I've gone to school with some of these individuals who are.
Could I ask, your time unfortunately is limited. What ward do you live in?
What ward do I live in?
Yes.
I live in North Las Vegas, across from, across from Joe Mackey's school.
I think what you might want to do, because it sounds like you have some particular interests there, I would certainly go in front of the North Las Vegas City Council, but perhaps make an appointment and see how they can help you, because this is, our address is Las Vegas City.
I understand that, ma'am.
Thank you.
But the whole thing is, the people that who are attacking me as far as Freemasonry, go to the Rotary that's down the street from you. So what's your jurisdiction?
Okay, well, I think what you still.
This is right here in nineteen oh nine. That's, that's right on Bonanza.
Okay, well, perhaps to go in and get a councilperson there to contact us, and maybe with you have a complaint or something that's specific, because you live in North Las Vegas. That would be your avenue to us.
So, so you're saying that people who are affiliated with, under the First Amendment, that are part of assemblies can, can attack you because of their power?
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is you need, you've run out of time unfortunately, and you need to, you obviously have some specifics that you're wanting to address. So I would start there, or you can go to the Freemasons or wherever it is here, but I would certainly go to North Las Vegas, seek their counsel, and have them advise you.
Well, ma'am, I, absolutely, and I'm, I'm not trying to be disrespectful because I know you guys have a lot of power and influence, but this is my only voice that I have, is coming to you guys' council. And when your, when your husband was in office, I addressed the same things to him along with this board, and I tried to schedule appointments with him specifically.
Well, I'm just trying to get you help, and so if you had a city councilperson, what ward would the, the? In North Las Vegas.
They haven't done anything, ma'am. That's what I'm, that's why I'm trying to bring it. I'm under the impression that once something is not done, that you go to the higher authority to get that actually done. They're not doing that.
City of Las Vegas is a partner, but not over North Las Vegas. The county would be the appropriate level up.
I've gone to them also, ma'am, even when.
I'm really sorry. I wish we could spend more time with you, but we have done this today, and if there's any way to go back to wherever you live, who's your councilperson and have them help you address your issues.
So if that doesn't, if that doesn't do anything, what am I supposed to do towards that?
You have to keep trying. Always keep trying.
I'm saying, in, in America, I thought that if you have.
Mayor, if I could interrupt.
Yes.
You know, I think we're going, this is more of a discussion. It's not something that's posted on the agenda. You know, same precaution that we gave earlier. I would suggest that if you'd like, I could have the deputy manager meet with this gentleman and see if we can get him directed to the right area.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to be heard?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Councilman Ross, congratulations. And Councilman Wilson. Good luck in your next endeavor. I hope I don't have to see you professionally. And I want to know who is going to take your place on the, on the homeless kids or that, because I, I, I think that needs to continue.
The Nevada Child Seekers?
Yes.
I was going to address that when we get to council participation. Mr. Farlow, thank you.
Very nice comments, and now we will move on to council member recognition comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of the council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? We will start with Councilman Wilson in deference to this being his last meeting.
Well, thank you, Mayor Goodman. I think I've pretty much said it all, and I appreciate my colleagues surprising me today. That was a total surprise, and thank you for all your nice comments. This is my last council meeting, and, and it's been a pleasure. I look forward to serving the citizens of Las Vegas and Clark County in my new job. Mr. Farlow, the Nevada Child Seekers, what a great, great organization. It's been my honor for the last couple of years to highlight a missing child, and we had a child to highlight today, but the child was found. And when the child is found so close to airtime, we, we can't get a new child. So even Mayor Carolyn Goodman suggested to me the other day that somebody pick this job of announcing missing children up on my behalf. So I'm going to leave that up to Mayor Goodman, who she thinks would be appropriate, or any of my colleagues who, you know, might want to do it. Thank you.
I think it's been absolutely a phenomenal undertaking, and we definitely will continue it. Thank you, thank you, Councilman Wilson. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Councilman Proten.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce my second annual Feature Teacher Awards ceremony. This is a way for me to recognize the best teachers that are in Ward Four at our elementary school and middle school. The award competition starts today, Wednesday, February first, 2012. The competition nominations and, and guidelines have been delivered to all the elementary schools and middle schools in Ward Four. Students then have the opportunity to nominate their teacher to be, to receive this Feature Teacher Award, and they have till February second to make that nomination and present it to the front office with the, with the principal. Those will then be sent to the Clark County School District, and representatives from the city of Las Vegas, as well as the Clark County School District, will go through those nominations and select the best teacher from that school based on the nomination. The awards ceremony will be held on Thursday, May tenth, at six thirty P.M. at Becker Middle School. So if you are a, a school in Ward Four, an elementary school or a middle school, and you're a student, start looking at whether you want to nominate your teacher, and on May tenth, I'm looking forward to honoring the teachers in my ward that are spending a lot of time making sure that these kids are educated, and it's my honor to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. And council members, I want to first thank all of the residents and great voters in Ward Six that have retained me to continue to represent them on the Las Vegas City Council. I consider my job extremely important and take it very seriously, representing the folks out in the Northwest and everybody in the city of Las Vegas, so thank you very much. Secondly, a few months ago, I was approached by the IRS, asking that the city of Las Vegas sponsor a site where certain residents can get their taxes prepared for free. This is a collaborative, collaborative effort between the United Way of Southern Nevada, the Internal Revenue Service, and local community organizations. The project is designed to increase the number of households who benefit from the earned income tax credit and child tax credit through free tax preparation at Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Sites, or VITAS sites. I thought it was a great idea, Mayor, and you and I just were there for the kickoff of, of the, of the VITAS sites and the earned income tax credit. Thought it was a great idea and volunteered a site in Centennial Hills at the Centennial Hills Community Center over the YMCA, where IRS-certified volunteer tax preparers will help individuals and families claim their maximum benefit and refund. This free service provides low to moderate income households with free, quality tax return preparation and access to information and resources that promote fiscal responsibility. If your income is fifty thousand dollars or less annually and you would like tax preparation assistance, please contact my office, Tuesday James at two two nine five four six three, or Michelle Thaxton at two two nine six one five four. And there are VITAS sites all over the city of Las Vegas. So if you fit within that, if you make fifty thousand dollars or less annually, you want free tax preparation, see about getting as much money back from the federal government as you can, call our office, and we'll get you in touch with the right site. Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you. That's called Earn It, Keep It, Save It, and if you dial two one one, you can find out where the site is closest to you, but it's Earn It, Keep It, Save It, and it's sponsored actually in largest part by the United Way, and it's wonderful that you have a site. So that's just really grand, and they will help you do it online as well. So that's quite an undertaking and remarkable. Thank you. Councilman Coffin, anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Project Neon, which is involved with the expansion of Interstate fifteen and also the addition of additional means of traveling along Interstate fifteen, is going to be holding a meeting at the Springs Preserve on Wednesday, February eighth, from three thirty to six thirty. The presentation will be at five P.M. That means you can come early at three thirty and look at their mockups or ask individual questions, but the presentation will be at five P.M. If anybody wants additional information, please call two two nine, two two nine nine, and someone in my office will help provide it. I, this is a very complicated issue with Project Neon because its goals have changed somewhat, but it is something that's going to affect all the people along that particular corridor, so I hope that you will attend. Thank you.
Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor, thank you so very much. The time has come, and the month has come, for me to host my, my monthly Coffee with the Councilman, which will be taking place tomorrow at Starbucks at the corner of Rancho and Bonanza. I will be there from nine A.M. until ten A.M. So if there's anyone in the business community or any constituent looking to meet with me or would like to meet with me, come on out, have a cup of coffee, or frappuccino, or cappuccino, and we'll have a good time talking about whatever it is you would like to discuss with me. And that takes place the first Thursday of every month throughout the year, Coffee with the Councilman. In addition to that, on February seventeenth, the Nevada Health Centers, in conjunction with Ward Five, myself will be hosting a job fair inside of the Enterprise Park on February seventeenth from nine A.M. to two P.M., and this will take place at the Family for Independent tomorrow, and that location address is nineteen thirty-one Stella Lake, S.T.E.L.L.A. Some of the jobs that will be, that the Nevada Health Center will be looking for are medical assistants, front office clerk, infant and children WIC center workers, medical records clerk, OBGYN scheduler, registered nurse, and a few other positions as well. So this job fair is open to the public, so if, in fact, you know anyone in the medical industry or have any medical experience in the front office, please have them come out to the job fair. Once again, that address is nineteen thirty-one Stella Lake, taking place at the Family for Independent tomorrow location, and it is with the Nevada Health Centers and my office, Ward Five. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being patient, keeping us through lunch, that we have concluded this. But I, again, want to make a statement that Councilman Wilson will be available through the fourteenth and in and out of, and his staff will be here up through the twentieth. So anybody who has issues in Ward Two, please feel free, and I also want to wish him, on behalf of our council and everybody in the city, the very best in your next endeavor, and hopefully we see you socially or visiting us, but not on any business item that's in your office.
Nobody wants to be indicted or charged with.
Nobody wants to be indicted or charged with a crime.
And, well, depending on what the outcome might be. So anyway, considering this, with no one else having anything else from the agenda, this meeting is adjourned, and our next meeting will be the fifteenth. Thank you very much.